I'd like to welcome everybody to the Coeur d'Amateur Town Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, May 17, 2022. And with that, I will go ahead and call the meeting into order. And can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Mangan.
Here.
Councilmember Avazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Here.
And Mayor Kassisa.
Here. And with that, if we can stand and salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up our meeting for public comment. This gives anybody from the public an opportunity to speak on the item that is not on our agenda. Three ways, either in person, please just step to the podium, either raise your hand via Zoom, which we have one hand raised, and then via email. So we're going to take in-person first. Go ahead. You may need to raise that a little. I can't tell if it's on or not.
I think you need to turn it on first.
Is that on Rebecca? I can't tell.
Oh, okay.
You have three minutes. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. I just had a really quick thank you to say. On the consent calendar, the council will be appointing a new youth commissioner to the Parks and Rec Commission. And as my term concludes, I would just like to say a huge thank you to the Town Council and Parks and Rec's Commission for the last two years. And it was such a great opportunity for me to serve as youth commissioner. I was born in a really special place with a lot of opportunities, opportunities, and I'm eternally grateful. I'm working almost full-time now at the town center, and I would love to see all of you there in the coming years. And thank you so much for my opportunities. Thank you.
And Lucy, thanks for your service, by the way. We do have two hands raised. If you can bring it over to Pat, and then we'll follow that by David. Thanks.
Okay, Pat, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi there. Thank you all of you for the really deliberative process that you just went through selecting members for the BPAC Committee. I just want to say, though, that if you are doing an open and public process, one thing you left out was there was no public comment ever invited during that process. And I know it's time-consuming, but if you really are doing a public and transparent process, I just don't know why you wouldn't honor the normal procedures that the town always goes through. So just a note for the future, because I would have liked to have spoken on behalf of one of the candidates specifically. And so, I don't know, just a thought that that should be considered. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Pat.
We did have.
Yeah, just Rebecca, no, we did have public comment. I believe it was in the beginning and not the end. And we can take a look at that, see if we need to tweak the process, since that was the first time we went through that. And then if you can bring over David, please.
David, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear us, David?
That's. Yep, you're on. Very good. Thanks. I really appreciated the three members of the existing BPAC for their willingness to continue to serve. And I was particularly impressed with the citizens who are very educated and very qualified. Should any member of the BPAC not be able to serve out their term? That's very impressive. I think the BPAC has some very important projects and projects that we haven't even determined yet. And with the continued support of the Town Council, the Town Manager, and our extraordinary public works and planning, I really look forward to continuing to serve. And thanks a lot.
Thanks, David. Appreciate the comments. I do not see any more hands raised, and there's nobody at the podium in person. Do we get any email comments in?
Thank you, Mayor Kassisa. Did, we did not receive any emailed public comments for open time specifically.
Okay, thanks. And there's no more hands raised. So I will go ahead and close public comment. That brings us to presentations. We have three presentations tonight. Before we get to the first one regarding proclamations, I just want to make mention that there was an incident in town center approximately two weeks ago. I issued a statement through Central Marine Police Authority on their press release. I just want to reiterate that statement again, and that is the town of Coeur d'Amateur condemns this incident, or the incident that happened, has hateful expressions of intolerance that are contradictory to the values of our community. Incidents such as these in any form cannot and will not be tolerated and will be taken seriously. I believe in staying, looking at things in a positive way, or staying positive and generating positive energy, because I think that's what's best for our community. So with that, what I'd like to do is I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Beckman, because we have a proclamation tonight that declares May of this year 2022 as Jewish American Heritage Month. And like, Councilmember Beckman, go ahead and read that proclamation, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Honored to do so. And I really appreciate the statement that you made on the incident that we saw in Coeur d'Amateur. I know that, that seeing that it was on your radar, and you know, that it was something that you were committed to responding to, was reassuring to a lot of folks. So thank you very much. So I'm going to read now. This is a proclamation of the town of Coeur d'Amateur declaring May 2022 as Jewish American Heritage Month. Whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is an annual tribute to the generations of Jewish Americans who helped weave the fabric of American history, culture, and society, and to the contributions of American Jews continue to make today. And whereas President George W. Bush proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month in 2006 as a result of a concerted effort by American Jewish leaders to introduce resolutions in both the US Senate and the House, urging the president to proclaim a month specifically recognizing Jews in America and their contributions to the United States. The month of May was chosen due to the highly successful celebration of the 350th anniversary of American Jewish history in May 2004, which was organized by the Commission for commemorating 350 years of American Jewish history. And whereas the Jewish American story is an essential chapter of the American narrative that has greatly contributed to the religious, cultural, political, economic, and intellectual advancement of all people by joining together with all faiths to reject ignorance and intolerance, to teach empathy and compassion, and to root out hatred wherever it exists. And whereas we recognize that Jewish communities continue to be challenged by bigotry, hostility, discrimination, and that our nation's commitment to religious freedom obligates us to root out prejudice and combat antisemitism. And whereas we support communities where everyone belongs and stand in solidarity against any acts of racism, violence, harassment, discrimination, and disenfranchisement against the Jewish community and against all Americans, regardless of their background, skin color, appearance, language and dialect, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, political and religious beliefs. And we continue to seek opportunities to heal together as we fight racism and xenophobia. And lastly, whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is the time when the culture and history of Jewish Americans is celebrated, and their sacrifices and contributions to this nation's, to this nation are honored. Now, therefore, the mayor of the town of Coeur d'Amateur does hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 to be Jewish American Heritage Month. And it, lastly, it says, in the town of Coeur d'Amateur, oh, declaring this month in the town of Coeur d'Amateur, and encourages all residents to acknowledge and honor Jewish Americans for their notable accomplishments and outstanding service, and to observe this month with solemn remembrance. Thank you.
Thanks, Eli. And we also have a proclamation declaring May this, this month as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Mangan to go ahead and read that proclamation.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor Kassisa. All right. This is the town of Coeur d'Amateur proclamation declaring May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander, AAPI, Heritage Month is being observed during the month of May to celebrate and acknowledge Asian American and Pacific Islander history, culture, and achievements. And whereas from 1977 to 1991, the nation celebrated Asian Pacific American Heritage Week, the first 10 days of May, through annual presidential proclamations. And then in 1992, Congress passed a law which annually designated the month of May as AAPI Heritage Month. And whereas May commemorates historical events of the AAPI presence in the United States, such as the immigration of the first Japanese citizen, Nakahama Manjiro, to the United States on May 7, 1843, the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869, the 140th anniversary of the Chinese Exclusion Act, and acknowledges the history of the Angel Island Immigration Station, where many were denied entry into our country. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have distinguished themselves as leading researchers in science, medicine, and technology, innovative farmers and ranchers, distinguished lawyers, judges, and government leaders in the arts, literature, and sports, and as war heroes who defended our country from fascism. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders value dignity, respect, diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility, and equal opportunity for all people, we stand in solidarity against any acts of racism, violence, harassment, discrimination, and disenfranchisement against the AAPI community and against all Americans, regardless of their background, skin color, appearance, language and dialect, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, political and religious beliefs. And we continue to seek opportunities to heal together as we fight racism and xenophobia. And whereas AAPI Heritage Month is a time to embrace the unique value that can be found in all of us, while recognizing that diversity represents one of our greatest strengths. And to celebrate the contributions and accomplishments of the Asian American and Pacific Islander population is important inclusion in building a more welcoming town for all. Now, therefore, our mayor Fred Kassisa, mayor of the town of Coeur d'Amateur, it does hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the town of Coeur d'Amateur, and encourage all residents to celebrate the diversity of Asian Americans and the Pacific Islanders by learning about the many different cultures, languages, and ethnicities that embody the AAPI community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to do one more, just to wing it. Hopefully, Todd's looking at me and Amy's looking at me. Patty Stoller pointed out that May is actually Older Americans Month, and I think we have an older population in Coeur d'Amateur. I think they do a lot of community contributions to our community. Look at, you know, Cheryl, who was just on her call on the BPAC, and her with "Go To" writing around town. So I'm going to proclaim that this May is Older Americans Month. This, this is short version, so don't worry. It's to encourage and recognize the countless contributions that older adults make to our communities. The 2022 theme is Age My Way, which is an opportunity for all of us to explore the many ways older adults can remain in and be involved with their communities. This theme focuses on how older adults can age in their communities independently for as long as possible, and participate in many ways that they choose. And in Coeur d'Amateur, it kind of emphasizes or shows that older Americans, this kind of fits what we do in Coeur d'Amateur, especially our older population. So with that, any council member would like to make any comments before I open up for public comment? Okay, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak on any of the proclamations that we just read or that were read? Okay, there's nobody in the podium. I don't see any hands raised. Oh, I have one hand raised, which is Patty Stoller. If you can bring it over, please.
You should be able to unmute yourself.
Got it. Thank you so much for including at the last minute. My bad for not including it much earlier in May, but I do appreciate the tip of the hat to Older Americans Month among the others. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Thanks. Any, any email comments?
We did not receive any additional emails, public comments.
Thanks. So with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. And again, just positive energy, I think is the greatest thing in the world. It just, yeah, positive. With that, we're going to go to 3B, which is a budget overview. I'm going to turn over to Daria. One disclaimer with this is, is that we're not discussing numbers, budget numbers, where money's going. This is to provide an overview of the budget process. And again, it's another step in transparency, because it helps educate council members on some of these funds, revenues, and expenses. And it also educates, and it's formative for the public. So I'll turn it over to you. Thanks.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, so this presentation is intended, you know, to provide some preliminary information in advance of the budget hearing, which will take place at the next meeting. And at that time, you'll be provided with the budget book, which is about 100 pages. But tonight, we're here just to talk about the general overview of the structure of the budget and to answer questions that we did receive about the budget, and also to answer any other questions that council or anyone else may have. So I did distribute to the council members who are here a small packet, and Rebecca will display on the screen for everyone else's benefit, that a few pages that are actually going to be in the budget document, and just for the purposes of this discussion. So the first page, page one, I've handwritten on, on the bottom of the page numbers, because they're different than what is going to be in the budget book. The first page is called Overview of Funds, and it lists all of the governmental funds and the business funds on the town's books. It doesn't include any of the trust funds or agency funds, such as the Pension Trust Fund, or the OPEB Trust, or Central Marine Fire, anything like that. Those are assets that are being held for the benefit of other individuals other than the town. So, but all of these funds, which are listed here, with the exception of the Sanitary District and the Insurance Fund, are governmental funds. And the other two funds are considered proprietary funds. But I did include them, because especially the Sanitary District, it's such a large portion of the town's finances. So as you can see on here, the General Fund, which is the operating fund, which is the day-to-day revenues and expenditures, and the, and the recurring sorts of revenues and expenditures of the town. As you can see, accounts for most of the revenue, over 22 million, and most of the expenditures, over 20 million, another, almost 21 million. So, and there are other funds, some of these other funds on here, like the Coeur d'Amateur Sales Tax Fund, or the Park Madera Center Fund, the Recreation Fund. You may have heard us talk about how they're part of the General Fund, and that's on the financials. They are. But we segregate them here on the town's books so that there can be transparency and clear reporting with respect to those revenues and expenditures. Most of the other funds that are listed on here are what they are called Special Revenue Funds. And they're, they're mainly having to do, not only, but mainly having to do with capital projects. And the money can only spent, be spent in that way. And when you receive the budget document next month, there will be an explanation of each fund, along with a definition about the sorts of revenues that are in the funds. So this is just a summary. The next page, page two, that is the General Fund, the proposed budget for the General Fund for next year. And I thought I would just use this to just briefly explain how the funds work. As you can see, there's at the very top, a line that says Beginning Balance. And what that is, is at the end of each fiscal year, whatever money is unspent, for whatever reason, either revenue was more than expected or expenditures were delayed, whatever balance is in there is called, you know, is referred to as the Beginning Balance. And then throughout the year, the revenues that are received, which are listed here by major category, are added to that balance. And as you can see, property tax is a large portion. It's, I think, nearly 35% of the General Fund revenue. And then that line that says sales taxes or other taxes, that includes sales tax, which is projected to be about $8 million and about 36% of the General Fund. So between those two, that's the vast majority of the General Fund revenue. And then the other revenues are listed there. And again, next month, there'll be detail given on this. This is, again, just a summary. So to the, to the Beginning Balance, all of the revenues are added. And then that line called Transfers In, that's when money is moved from another fund to the General Fund. In this case, it's from the Sales Tax Fund to pay for code enforcement salaries, which will be discussed shortly. So at the end, that next blue line that says Total Revenue and Transfers In, that's the total of the Beginning Balance plus the revenues and transfers in. So essentially, we're expecting there'll be about $22.9 million, you know, as available resources in the, in the General Fund. And then you can see the expenditures there listed by major classification as well. The salaries and benefits, not including the unfunded liability, count, account for about 27% of the expenditures. That doesn't include police and fire, police, because they are, those services are provided by joint powers authorities. So the town doesn't pay their salaries directly. Those are paid by the JPAs, and the town pays the JPA. So police accounts for about 19%, and fire for nearly 25%. And that's not all salaries, but it's primarily salaries. And then the PERS unfunded liability and the repayment of the PERS unfunded liability pension obligation bonds accounts for another 6.5%. So then you see the various categories there. And then you see the line Transfers Out, which is sending money to other funds. And in the coming year, it's $600,000 to the Insurance Fund, which is where workers' comp and property and liability claims and premiums are recorded. And then at the very end, what, once you have the Beginning Balance, adding in the revenue, subtracting out the expenditures and transfers out, you get to the Ending Balance, which in this year, you'll see, had a different line, additional line there about those certificates of participation that were issued last year. And they're being held by an outside trustee, but they're part of the Beginning, the Ending Balance, and will be spent this year. So I subtracted them out, because we won't have that anymore. And then the Ending Balance, you can see the different components of that. The council had decided that a 20% reserve would be, would be a goal, and it's been met since they decided that. That goal has been meant, met. You can see the Park Madera Center deficit there, which is subtracted from the Ending Balance of the General Fund. That, although it's part of the General Fund, at one time, years ago, it was decided that a separate fund should be established in order to keep track of the amount that the town was in essence subsidizing the Park Madera Center and over many years built up to this amount. So that's what that line is. And then the difference, what's remaining is the Unassigned Ending Balance. So.
Daria, can I?
Yes.
Jump in without throwing off your mojo. So there's something here. This is the secret sauce of our budget. So think about the $3 million that we had at the bottom, that was unassigned ending balance due to our surpluses over the last few years. We moved that into the capital projects list for our, our town hall project. And so even doing that, you can see that we're, we have an ending balance of $2.5 million at the end of this year. One of the things Daria and I are going to recommend of the council is just to zero out that Park Madera Center deficit, move it to the side where we can always show that, and people can look at what that deficit was over the period of years. But from an accounting standpoint, zero it out and really show an unassigned balance of about 1.5 million. The other thing that really helps us with the surpluses and allows us to improve our services compared to other agencies, it's up at the top. So there's, there's three areas. The first one is Central Marine Police Authority. We've been consolidated since 2013, but really going back to 1980. If the consolidation in 1980 and 2013 respectively did not happen, we've done analysis, and we've compared ourselves to other jurisdictions. If you have an agency, 7,000 population or, or larger, up to 20,000, you really pay the same for police services. You need supervision, and you need a certain amount of officers and service delivery. That number today wouldn't be 3.9 million. It would be 6.4 million. So that's the first thing. You know, we made a lot of savings. We improved our service, and we did it in an efficient way. The second one was if in 2019, actually 2017 to 2019, we started sharing services with Arcspur for fire services, and then we consolidated in 2019. If we did not do that, and we continued on the current trends with CalPERS cost, equipment replacements, workers' comp, adding two paramedic firefighters to the engine companies, you know, so adding more firefighters with that consolidation. If we did not do that, we would be paying $7.4 million for fire services today. So if you think about that, we just opened up $3 to $4 million in our General Fund, then to attack the retiree health issues that we've had of the past that allowed us to bond. So if you go then, our bond mechanism. So if you look at that number up above, the pension obligation bonds of 9.5 or 951,000, that's a flat rate moving forward. If we didn't do that, what would happen is that number would go from 900,000 all the way past $2 million over the next 15 years. We saved, I believe, how much was it, Daria? 12 million, 14 million?
Yes, yes, over the course.
We saved 12 to 14 million by doing the pension bonds at a high 2%, low 3% rate, right? So now the mechanism, that savings by doing that annually, is about 908 to $900,000. So go to that number above, that 327 number of unfunded liabilities. So what happens now by council policy is we make the pension payment, we save on average annually 8 to 900,000 this fiscal year coming up. And then our first mechanism, mechanism is how did CalPERS rate of return do? They're two years behind. So this fiscal year accounts for the actuary back when they had a 4.1% rate of return. That rate of return was below the 7% that they thought they would make, right? So it's a $390,000 unfunded liability. So we take that 900 savings annually, we move it straight over there, 390,000. Now, the remaining money left over out of the 900 savings after that, move down to the OPEB, the retiree health. It's $600,000, right? That's by just that, that smart funding mechanism that the council approved last year allowed us, without hitting the General Fund, hitting services on an annual basis, we can do that. After this fiscal year, our retiree health will be funded at 70%. That's, that's remarkable. We're way ahead of the game there, and we're in good, in good standing. And so the other part is the actuary report for the following fiscal year, that a 21% rate of return. So what that means is now we're super funded with CalPERS next year by $2 million. That means that we will be set to actually lower the discount rate from 7 to 6%. The last point that I want to make to you is on those fund balances that totaled on the previous sheet. Daria, it totaled 51 million in assets. Well, you need to add about 7.8 million to it, because we also have the Pension Trust that is about 3.7 million, and the OPEB retiree health account, which is right around 4 million. That's not shown on any of these numbers. So just good leadership by Daria's recommendations to council, and councils made some really good decisions. This is what separates us when you see the city in Nevada has a $2.7 million deficit. You saw the $3 million deficit in Sausalito. This is why they didn't, some of the decision-making that we've made has positioned us really well, and that's what separates us from our cohorts. But, sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, the next page, the General Fund expenditures, at the bottom there, those General Fund transfers. Some of that is what Todd was mentioning, the transfers to the other funds in the current fiscal year due to having some unallocated Ending Fund balance. We were able to put additional money into the Insurance Fund. The adopted budget had been $600,000, and we put in another 250 for $800,000. And the Equipment Fund, normally, the transfer is $200,000, and we're able to increase that by a million dollars so that we will have money for technology and cybersecurity and furniture and various things for the new town hall, as well as vehicle replacement. And then that transfer to Town Capital Projects, that's a new fund which I established when the council authorized us to put, first of all, 1.5 million from that Ending Balance, to put that aside for capital projects. And then the ARPA funds, the federal funds for the pandemic, which we have used and are using to pay for police, it freed up an additional $2.2 million, which we could put in that fund also. And then we're able to reduce the Park Madera Center debt as well. And this information is the exact same as on the previous page in terms of expenditures and transfers. But it's this way, it's just organized by department instead of by. instead of by salaries, benefits, so forth. Here you can see it's by each individual department. And again, you'll be given many pages next week about the details of all of that. So the next page, page four, that's just a summary of the capital funds, the capital budget, which was not included in, in that general fund that was just discussed. This is just to show that in addition to those operating expenditures that you just saw, there's also a whole separate budget for capital, capital projects. And you can, and it's arranged this way, you can see the name of each project here. And then going across those columns show each of the funding sources. And a lot of them are legally restricted, like RMRAs, road maintenance and rehabilitation account, street impact fees, capital improvement, that's grants, and also the TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin money, which can only be spent on certain things, gas tax. And then that town capital projects fund that I just mentioned, the recreation capital fund, Measure A Parks, and the certificates of participation proceeds there is, you can see. So you can see out of the seventeen million dollars, a lot of that is for the town hall project, like eleven million dollars, and that will be paid for by those, those proceeds of the debt that was issued and by the, the, the money that was transferred to that new fund from the ending balance.
And just one other thing there, just that this is strictly, this is our public works team. And we bring in on average with the sales tax measure, when we promised that to the voters a few years back and repealed the flood tax, which was about seven hundred thousand annually, we bring in about four million dollars in revenue for capital improvement projects and then another million on average in restricted funds. So think about that, that's five million annually, plus about another three million annually for the sanitary district. The team is, is attacking it. If you go back, move forward to this fiscal year and the last two, we have been spending on average three point five to four million dollars annually on infrastructure, purely infrastructure, straight from the sales tax measure that we promised the voters. Just doing some great work. Think about, you know, the delivery you have, I think, the town hall project again is a big one. It's eleven million of, of the infrastructure projects, but you have three point five for streets and, and roadways. You have one point six for flood control, storm drains and pipe repair. You have, you know, the town hall project that overall seventeen million plus another four point five in sanitary district projects just for our size town and our staff. It's remarkable. I can't say enough how, just what a great job RJ and his team are doing. And the sales tax oversight committee evaluates our expenditures, you know, at the end of the year, but they also give us feedback at the start of the year to really review what we're doing, making sure we're doing the right thing. We made a number of changes this, this fiscal year for the better. It was regarding some of the services that we were paying for from the sales tax measure. The committee felt it was appropriate to move that to the general fund and focus on, on projects. And so we did do that. And we're really proud to bring this to you next, next, uh, next meeting. But again, I just, it, it, this is unbelievable for, for the, the amount of employees that we have in this small town of what they're delivering.
Okay, on the next page, page five, those, that's just a list of the sanitary districts that, of projects, the ones that Todd was talking about, just to show you that. And the sanitary district will have several pages of its own budget since it's its own entity at the next meeting. So in regard to the questions that we received before the meeting, the next few pages are information on the recreation fund. Because I was asked to, to talk about the recreation fund and because it's a little bit confusing about why it appears in two different places in the budget. It appears in the general fund and then it's its own fund also. And, you know, just on its own. And the general, the general fund does support the recreation fund by paying for certain salaries, for example, the director. And it pays for utilities and building maintenance and that sort of thing, computer help. So, and in this coming year, it'll be about four hundred thousand dollars that the general fund is contributing. And then the recreation fund itself is, is intended to be self-supporting. And that's where we record all the information having to do with the various programs that just childcare, sports, enrichment, all of those types of things. So beginning on page, let's see, on page eleven, I've prepared two different versions of the, the recreation fund, one showing as we're doing now, including the general fund support for this, for this fund. So you can see on pages eleven and twelve, it includes the transfer from the general fund of two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars in the previous fiscal year. And it doesn't show any of the funds directly paid by, or excuse me, any of the expenditures directly paid by the general fund. So in this way, it shows that in the previous fiscal year, there was a zero, and there was a zero ending balance because of the fact that it needed to have two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars transferred from the general fund. It would have had a deficit had that not happened, but the general fund did that. So that was zero. This year, we, we are expecting a little bit of a, a surplus. And then for the next year and the proposed budget, a, a larger surplus of two hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars. But as I said, that doesn't include the general fund support for, directly from the general fund. So if you will look at pages, and let's see, thirteen and fourteen, those show the recreation fund with no general fund support, no transfer in. And at the bottom of page fourteen, all of the costs paid by the general fund. So as you see there, had that not happened, you know, the, no general fund support in the last three years, there would be a deficit, a, a negative ending balance of about a million dollars. However, you will also notice that on that line that says net increase, decrease on page thirteen, the, the recreation fund is making big progress towards being self-supporting because as you can see in twenty twenty one, there was a deficit of about five hundred thousand dollars. This year, we think it will be three hundred and eighty nine or so, and then next year, a hundred and seventy. So that is, that's the information about the recreation fund. If anyone has any questions about that. And then finally, the other question that I re, that I received had to do with staffing, with staffing levels. So, and I think Todd is also going to speak about this in a minute. But on page fifteen, you will see the organizational chart for the town. And I, I guess we were asked about this because it seemed as though positions were increasing, town employee positions that were increasing. And they were from a high back in two thousand and twenty, or two thousand and two, two thousand and three, twenty years ago, not including fire. We've taken fire out because it's separate now. Staffing was about forty point three full-time equivalent employees. And then over the years, as there was financial problems in the country and the town as well, and an economic downturn, staffing was reduced pretty significantly to twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, you know, over the years. And then since that time, it's increased again. And now the proposed staffing for the next year's budget is forty two point seven five FTE. So there were a few reasons why there's been an increase. One has to do with the passage of the Corte Madera local sales tax. When that was passed, council gave direction to focus on certain areas, including infrastructure and capital projects as well as youth and senior programs and disaster preparedness. So in order to accomplish these tasks, additional staff was hired. First, a project manager was hired in two thousand and nineteen for infrastructure and capital projects. And based on what was being paid previously for that sort of work by the town, we think that the savings is about three hundred thousand dollars a year or more because consultants were previously used. And now, as Todd mentioned, there's a lot more capital projects and we would have had to had a lot more consultants. But now we have a, a full-time project manager. So that's one addition. And recreation hired some staff for senior and youth programs, which is also paid for by the sales tax. And that's the equivalent of one FTE, one full-time equivalent, one full-time employee. And then code enforcement. An employee was hired in code enforcement in order to assist with disaster preparedness and fire prevention. And as a result of this employee, the town has also had some revenue increase. He looks for things like business license compliance. And I'll just say, we've switched to HDL now, an outside, an outside consultant who processes our business licenses. But through March, we've already, even including paying HDL exceeded what we received for the entire year last year, even though we still have three months. So some of it's probably code enforcement, some of it may be HDL, some of it may be something else, but that's the fact. And also parking and, and local fine revenue has, has increased as well. So that, that person, that employee's salary is paid largely by Measure F. And then other employees replacing contracts where there's a, a person who is now a field project manager. She was originally hired as an assistant engineer in two thousand and eight in order to replace some outside consultants for engineering and primarily the sanitary district work. And at the time, the savings were about fifty thousand dollars a year. So it's hard to say exactly what they are now because her salary has increased, but probably the cost of the, the engineering, you know, people, their salaries probably increased. But there, there was, you know, significant savings on that. Regarding the building inspector and plans examiner position, which the town plans to hire, you know, shortly. Over the past three years, the town has spent between a hundred and seventy two thousand and a hundred and ninety two thousand dollars on inspection services on outside contractors and another hundred and sixteen to two hundred and twenty three thousand spent on outside services for plan checking during that same period. So the building inspector slash plans examiner is expected to cost about a hundred and forty three thousand dollars a year, depending where the person is placed on the salary schedule and what sort of benefits they decide to sign up for. And also, one of the permit technicians will also be reviewing some of the plans and will cost the, the town about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year. And there will still be some contract services in the budget, but the savings should, you know, should be fifty, you know, to a hundred thousand dollars a year. And then also, some of the recreation staff that was added, I'm the additional coordinator and recreation assistant with increased hours are for the childcare program, which is actually expected to bring in about two hundred thousand dollars more in revenue than expense over the next two years, this year and then the, the next year. And then also, I think some of the increase may be because of the way employees were counted in the past. I think there were probably two or three positions in the recreation department, which I'm counting, but they were previously not counted because they were held by temporary and seasonal and intermittent employees. And now in order to have a more stable and effective workforce, the, you know, the, the employee hours have been increased. So I'm counting them in this count where they hadn't been counted before. The maintenance staffing numbers have remained constant, but the higher paid positions of director of maintenance and the superintendent have been replaced by lower paid positions. And the town has historically employed one point five to two planners and now employs three planners due to increased workload. And then just as a final note, the sanitary district, as Todd mentioned, we're doing a lot of projects, the, the public work staff, they pay about a mil, one million dollars, just over one million dollars to the town for the town, the town employees work. So.
I, I'm sure you make two quick comments because as, when I asked Daria on the park and rec fund, because when I was park and rec, on the park and rec commission, the salaries of the top two employees are removed over to the general fund. So that's why I asked her to, to create this because I think it gives us a better picture of how much we're actually taking out of the general fund to make up for park and rec. So this way, it's a true, I want to say, cost revenue center. And then on the employees, it was the same type thing. We're asked her to put this information together because over time, we've seen staff come to us and ask us for various employees, which have the utmost confidence and trust in staff. If they're asking us for somebody, it's, it's necessary and it's needed. It's just, I want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and we have an idea of the number of employees that the town's actually employing. So I appreciate you putting those two pieces of information together. I'm going to turn it over to Taka, I think he wants to talk about community grant program services and financial assistance. And after that, I'll bring it back to council for questions and then we'll open up for public comment. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to thank Daria for always simplifying things. She really has to stupefy it for me when I, you know, so I can understand the forty six million we're about to spend. And so she does a great job. As the mayor said, we, council members, Mongin and Beckman, you, I emailed you that, all the documents too, so you should have them. But we did give an organizational chart that was up on the screen and behind the organizational chart, there's a lot of numbers on there, but we're going to start to tell you the story, you know, but going all the way back to two, oh, two, oh, three and move all the way forward to present time, there's a story, there's three economic downturns. We went from forty employees down to twenty five to twenty eight for a period of years and those positions almost never came back. And what we started to do, because of unfunded liability issues and not really understanding the state of the situation back then, we started contracting services. And I'm going to tell you a story about how we're starting to go away from that. And we're starting everything that we go to council, we're saying, can we do it smarter? Can we improve service delivery? Can we do it at a cheaper price? And can we also do it where it positions us to share services and possibly consolidate services with others? So I'm going to tell you a story about building in a second. So you have that document, please take a look at it over the next thirty days, but keep it with you always because this is, this is kind of a living document for us. It's important to understand where we've been and how do we get here and where we're going. So it's a really good document. The second one to the mayor's question, I wanted to show you up on the screen here. What we also did is we went back a few years, trying to just tell the story again with staffing, and we'll do that at the next meeting. But specifically to parks and rec, you can go all the way back here. This first column here is sixteen seventeen, right? This is parks and rec. So total cost for parks and rec back in sixteen seventeen fiscal year was one point three four nine million. We brought in seven hundred and fifty three thousand in revenue. So the town subsidized that remaining, that, that difference. Move forward to the following year, seventeen eighteen, you can see the delta, it's almost six hundred, you know, thousand. Continuing a similar trend, the following year, the following, those next, those four years are all the same. You start to see we're in COVID, but we're starting to transition employees. We're starting to rebuild our leadership team and you can start to see that gap close. The, the expenditures are raising, we're adding employees, but we're also attacking services, right? We're giving the services, we're starting to, to, to support those services and that gap is now closing. On any given year, you know, a win for Darian, I and the council was if we spent three to four hundred thousand in a subsidy. But the average was really six hundred. So you can see where that trend could change in. And we're also going to probably have some discussions with the commission this next year and the council to maybe change the philosophy of how we, how we think about parks and rec as well. So that, that'll come. And so that's the first point. And the next one that I wanted to give you.
Hey Todd, really quick on that chart.
Yes.
Is there any way you can add a line maybe to the bottom of each of those categories that shows net? Because very real show revenue of X, expenditures of X, but maybe you could show that the net difference, like on park and rec, we actually see that it's going down over the years.
Okay.
Not to add more work.
Show you, okay. Document here. So this is kind of going into the, when you get into the DEI conversation as well. But I wanted to share something with council because I'm really proud of this. And I, Daria and I and staff, we didn't know really what this was going to look like when we started, but we knew we did a lot. And so when we, when we think about things, you know, and it's, again, it's, it's when we think about equity and we think about touching all the four corners of our community, you know, we call it something different. We call it leadership, you know, and we, 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 we put our heads together and we really try to, in our decision-making matrix, try to help those that need it most. Can't put a face, a name, a color, but we try to do right. And it's at the core of our decision-making. And this is a document that I think really tells that story. And so. And so going back to nineteen fiscal year, nineteen twenty, moving forward. So if you look at the last three years and this fiscal year moving forward, the town really undertook four key, key areas. One was disaster preparedness. Half of our communities in the fire zone, it's a threat and we had ordinances on the books. We had to start, we've educated for a period of years, but we'd never enforced the ordinances and, and it went back twenty years. And so what happened was vegetation management was just, it was uncontrollable. And we had to do something. And so instead of starting to enforce, we got with the, the council and we said, let's, let's educate, but let's help them do that. And so this, this, the first two columns in red, disaster preparedness and central marine grants, that was directly money that went straight to the removal of vegetation for our residents over the, over three-year span. And then this next fiscal year, it totals one point seven million dollars. That doesn't include the passes of measures, majesty at the county level, right? Right now, that measure brings in about eight hundred thousand annually for, for similar projects. But we did that going back to nineteen twenty and that was all residents in our community. The other ones in green, and so this is kind of, if you think of parks and rec programs, those that are really underprivileged, social, economic, you know, we want to reach out and we, and you know, we don't, we have a list for some of these, but we really rely on our partners, the school district, you know, major property owners for rentals and other things. And so here's some key ones, the yellow bus program, again, we support that. That's twenty-five thousand dollars a year through COVID and fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. They obviously didn't have the yellow bus program, so we didn't contribute, but seventy-five thousand over that four-year period. After-school programs, so the quarter Madera, Larkspur School District came to us and said, we have a number of families. I think somewhere in the thirty family range that really needed help for after-school programs. And so they didn't have the funding. They asked one of their cohort jurisdictions and they were turned down. And so we happily put that into the budget and, and we're gonna, we're recommending that approval. Senior and youth programs, we've always, we've always supported those. You can see over a three-year span, a hundred and four thousand dollars. And then two down, the staffing for senior and youth programs, we also take that seriously and we, we subsidize and we staff that because those are, those are important. The Marin Pirates Pirate Swim Program, we started that back in twenty-one, twenty-two. Pat Rivasio brought it to our attention that, you know, the Marin Pirates Swim Program, they helped underprivileged youth and provide swim lessons and training that wouldn't normally be afforded to them. And so we thought that was a good venture. We're asking to continue that, twenty-one thousand this, this coming year. And so we're really proud of the grassroots effort of just getting in there. What we've really been doing from, you know, talking about equity of just saying, hey, let's, let's go to our partners and just approach them and say, hey, we want to have a good partnership. What can we do for you? What do you need from us? And we haven't asked anything from anybody else, we're helping others. And so those are all really good examples of that. The next one is from another department. If you think about planning, building, public works in the sanitary district, these all follow under that. And so we're, again, just like the fireside, we're doing major multi-million dollar projects. And instead of enforcing and, and making the residents, you know, responsible for, you know, to doing some of these improvements, you know, a lot of us are, you know, house rich, cash poor. And we don't have five, ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars to do these replacements. So what we did is sidewalk program over three, the last two years and this coming fiscal year, four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars we've given back to our residents to replace their sidewalks, the sewer lateral. So you can see all of the, the remaining ones all have to do with the sewer laterals. There's different programs for the replacement of the sewer ladders. There's the lower sewer lateral, there's the upper sewer lateral responsible to the residents. Some of these grant programs help both or a combination thereof. If we're doing capital improvement projects on a street, we're replacing the laterals on the lower end. As we go down, we're not making that the responsibility of the, of the homeowners and we think that's the right thing. That's a big cost. As you know, we're doing, you know, four million dollars in improvements this year. There's a lot of laterals that need to be replaced. These programs will allow that and afford support for our residents. When we run out of that money, we'll come back to the council to replenish. So it's first come, first served and we'll continue to do that. And so I really appreciate the departments for thinking about that. Homelessness is a big issue in this county. These, these donations in yellow lines fifteen, sixteen and seventeen, the community homeless fund, this was really for the mobile showers. It was, it really, mobile showers are, you know, kind of the gateway to services to get out there and help people. A lot of these, it's eighty-three thousand dollars over the last few years. A lot of it really has supported our cohorts outside the county. If you ask me for numbers within the county, it would be caught the cost of one a home key. At the mayor's request, we're, we're offering some grants through our parks and rec programs for the residents at home key. Moving forward, we'll have discussions with council, you know, at, at the home key site. Probably eighty percent of those residents do have mental health issues and we want to support them. We have funding for the next three years, but we want to make sure that continues. And so that'll be a discussion, I think, from a county perspective of continuing that support moving forward. Lastly, through COVID lines eighteen, nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, this was, this was support, this, a lot of this, if you look at it, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. It went to legal aid and mediation services. Really, those were for low-income residents that needed support for rental, you know, with rent. Any issues going on in the county, all the agencies pitched in a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and the county matched it to support legal aid services through COVID. And then you can see the community grants, food, rent, small business support. The council was very, you know, in that number, those numbers were anyone that asked for help and, and we sent it out to the masses, we went through the property owner management to see who needed help, we helped them. And so if someone requested it, we gave it and that's what that number is. And, and if, if, if it was double, we would have, I'm certain the council would have approved that as well. So anyone that asked, we supported them. So if you really look at this and I broke it down in these four, you know, in the five areas really. So the number at the end of the day, over the last three fiscal years and moving forward is, is four point three million for community programs and support of our community, all walks, all four corners of our community. But it's broken down in those five areas. And, and so I think this is a starting point when we start talking about D E I, we talk about fines and fees. Where we want to go moving forward, we're not at a sum zero game. We, we're off to a good start. It's just what, what do we want to do moving forward? And so with that, I will stop with that. And I want to just give you one quick example of where we're going. This wouldn't be a workshop without a whiteboard. You got to have the whiteboard.
When's the last time you used one of these in public?
Oh, a little while. Okay, so I'm sorry, can, I don't know if you're going to be able to see on the, hopefully you can see. Councilmember Mangan, can you see, okay?
I just see your empty chair, but that's okay. I'll try to follow as best I can.
Okay, so, so the big, so one of our big issues was really improving services and building. Building was, it's so front-facing with our community. We've struggled with it over the years and there's a reason why. Back when we started, you know, we had Walt Kredinsky was our last, you know, building official inspector. He was amazing and in our small community, he kind of did it all. And when we, when he retired, we had a really hard time replacing him. I mean, really, that's where it started. And then you had the economic downturns. And what we did is we started, we started getting away from that holding a hand, like this is quarter Madera. So what you get from being a resident of quarter Madera, you should be able to call any one of us and we should be able to hold your hand and walk you through the process. This is really complicated stuff. And we've moved to contract services. So if you go back a few fiscal years ago, I'm going to take you to fiscal year twenty, 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 twenty-one. And so when you look at this fiscal year, we spent nine hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the building department. We had the director, so we shared a director for both the planning department and the building department, that's Adam Wolf. We have a building official and we had a permit technician. And then we provided all the other services for building. It was all contracted out at a very expensive rate, almost, it's over half a million dollars plus. And so we had inspector services. If you came in and you turn your application, we didn't necessarily have that customer service upfront where you're taking the application, you're starting the clock, whether it's complete or not, you know, and holding their hand to go, hey, you have a few days to complete it, here's what you're doing and you can start the clock and turn it around faster. We weren't, and so we were delayed on that. But when we did get the application, we farmed it out to three different contracted services at the time. And so there's a delay, there's a, there's a delay. There's a philosophically, you can't, you have a hard time controlling some of that. And so the dates were the dates. We also had one permit tech, so we contracted out permit tech services. We also contracted out the plan check and inspector services. So we were understaffed, we had over consultants and we just really got crushed in our customer service and it was at the expense of our residents. I own that. And so it took me a few years to, to really wrap my head around the issue. And, you know, Adam and I, we worked hard. We finally brought in with the support of the council, some outside help. So on that Thomas Arons, who's, who's really been there and done that in the business as a, as a building official. And he evaluated our situation. He started to give us advice on, on next steps. So from this period of time in twenty twenty-one, moving forward, COVID hit. And it allowed us to kind of reset, but at the time, our building permits went through the roof. And so again, we, it just really staggered us. And, and, you know, if you had to give us a shortcoming, that, that's, that was the area where, where I think we really fell short. And it wasn't for lack of trying, we were all really trying. And we pulled services from planning. So our team from planning, who's already busy enough on everything they're doing, they had to come help on building and help us with process, all of them. And it got us to where we are now. So when you think about where we are now and you, you look at the numbers and you're like, wait, you're going from three full-time employees and you have five now, you might want us, and planning is going to add one, what are you guys doing? Well, if you look at the total number between two years ago and keep in mind that step increases, that's M O U increases, that's raised, you know, and any given year, each department goes up two to five percent. But think about that two years ago, nine hundred and forty-three, in this budget, it's nine hundred and eleven. Because what we did is we eliminated the contract services and we go, this is going to be our philosophy. We're going to go out and recruit. We recruited a building official from Oregon. And what really sold Adam and I on him is his customer service, his bedside manner. He has to learn kind of the California way, but the quarter Madera way, he gets it. And so we hired him and then what we did behind him and really, you know, the building official handles everything, right? Provides admin technical oversight for all building and construction. He oversees the application process, plan review, permit issuance and building inspections. We had one permit tech. Our permit tech wasn't positioned necessarily for being the front interfacing customer service side. But what she's remarkable at is on the plan check side. She's a great checks and balances person. She turns things around so efficiently compared to our cohorts in the county. She's at the top of the game. So what we did is said, let's not spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on outside permit tech and plan check. Let's train her and let's make her a plan reviewer. So it's in-house, right? So that's the first one. So we, we save time on that process of plan check. Then what we did is we said, let's get, bring in a permit tech that has expertise as a permit tech, but also has the customer service front side. Hey, how can I say yes? How can I help you? Let's take your application, it's incomplete, we're going to start the clock now. You have three days to get this, tend it, right? You get all the checkboxes, but we're going to take it and it's all in-house, we're starting to handle it. On the other side, you have just the amount of permits we're taking and you'll, you'll see it, you'll hear about it at the next meeting. We really needed three. Three allows us to do a few things to potentially share services on the side of Larkspur. There's some opportunities there for permit texts and building officials, so we're evaluating that right now. The other one is we just, a council approved the Asilo software. Well, it's great, we have a software system, but it interacts with every department in our, in our town. And you need someone to be the administrator of that to make sure it's done right. We're doing things right, we're training, it's all today, you just can't get it and then who oversees it? So now we have an expertise across the board in these three important areas. The last one, council approved it a couple of meetings ago, the inspector. It's just as important of all the other positions. It's in-house, real time, they're out there doing it. They're also a plants examiner that helps the permit tax and the building official on the complicated ones, right? Because it's not always black and white, it's gray and you have to massage it and you have to find a way to say yes. That's what that position's bringing us with the building official. We still have the services of outside, outside services, our three code source, Foley and C S A. But again, that's only if we need them. We have big projects to make sure we don't, we don't slow down. But if we do farm it out, it's only a handful and it's specific ones. There's also redundancies in the system. So if someone's sick, we have redundancies at all levels of this department. The other thing that it does is it frees up our director because as you know, and you hear about it, Martha and, and Adam tonight and the last few meetings that they're dealing with some heavy-duty stuff, community development. We want Adam, that's what Adam does for us. He is the leader in his, in his area of that and we want him doing that, not supervising a department necessarily. And so this frees us up, improves our service, saves money and it's an example of what you'll see. But when you look at that spreadsheet and you go, okay, we went from forty employees back in oh-two and we, we went all the way down to twenty-five to thirty for a period of ten to fifteen years. And now I'm like, Todd, you're, you're staffing up to forty-two again, what are you doing? Well, we're delivering five to ten million dollars in capital improvement projects a year. You need staff there, we're improving our service delivery and building. Everything we do is in a mindset of sharing services and examples and admin. You'll see that it went up two hundred thousand dollars. The reason why is because we're looking at a climate action coordinator is that's really why it went up. If not, it would have went down because our admin analyst and our finance director, they actually bring in ninety thousand dollars in shared services revenue. So we don't do anything without saying, hey, can we share a service? Can we succession plan? Can we have a redundancy? And can it open, you know, help us up from a leadership role in the, in the county and anything we do? And so I'm proud to tell those stories, but this is an important one because this was a council priority. Fix it, figure it out. I think we did. And so I'm really looking forward to this next year of that service delivery for the, the community.
Yes. No, at this point, let me go ahead and open up for any questions from the town council. Let's start off with Charles.
Yeah, so thanks for this. I, I really just wanted to touch on one concept that I don't see on the board that I think is really important to share in my own experience, which is you have the dollar-to-dollar kind of result of that. But in service, I don't think one dollar buys the same thing in different scenarios, right? So I guess the analogy is one dollar is buying a one-star hotel room and the other dollar is buying a four-star hotel room. And the overall cost of the hotel rooms are the same. And that's a big difference in the customer service. So it's not only that you're seeing a cost savings, you're also, like you said, seeing a, a real benefit as far as encouraging growth in the town and, and other, other unseen benefits and, and cost savings. And that's really hard to fathom, but I guess I was trying to say that I see that as well. So thank you for that. And, and I guess I wish in budgets, we could see more of that also, the untangible but tangible values of a dollar, right?
Are there any other questions?
Just no questions now, right?
Yeah. Go ahead, won't you make your comments now because it's presentation?
Okay. Two things. This is so great. I have so many clients in town who have been complaining about what's been happening in building here. This is going to be a gigantic improvement because we're going to go back to the way we were and we're going to go back to providing great customer service. So thank you for doing this. You have no idea how good this is going to be for the people. It's going to be great. Rich Pearlstein, who was just here, is an architect. I'm sure he definitely appreciates this because he's a guy who deals with this every day. Secondly, I just want to go back to one of your original charts, you know, don't have to put up. I just want to thank Todd and Daria and the staff. It was talking about pensions and our pension liabilities and everything. There was a story in the I J this week. Sausalito is hiring a financial consultant to the tune of, I think, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to try to figure out what to do about their pension liabilities because they're going up so much over the next ten. I don't know what to do. And because of these people here in this room tonight, we do not have that problem. We are probably in better shape than any town in the right county. I just want to thank you guys for doing this and getting ahead of it. So thank you so much. That was it. Thanks.
Yeah, Eli, go ahead.
Thank you, Fred. Definitely want to second Bob's comments about just how important this change is going to be for the community and for, for quality of life. I mean, residents, you know, I think probably almost every resident has, you know, some sort of horror story about some, you know, brush with planning and building over the past, you know, decade or whatever. I think this is going to be a game changer for us. And, and I really see, you know, Todd and the staff working very hard to kind of translate the, the level of customer service that we strive to provide and translating that down all the way through the, the town as an organization. So thank you on that. Also, just a general thank you to Todd and Daria for this great presentation. Todd, I was wondering, could you speak to us a little bit about how, you know, obviously the, the kind of the general arc of the story? And this was really helpful for us all, just understanding the bigger context. But the general arc was, you know, we used to have a lot of staff dip down during the recession and really we kind of pushed that off, a lot of that work onto contractors. Now we're bringing a lot of that back in-house, really helpful to understand why we're doing that. I think one key difference between now and, and the sort of pre-recession period is the very different situation we're in with regards to pensions, right? And the pension liability that any in-house staff member accrues. Would you be willing to speak a little bit to the, to the change in the situation there and how that affects the affordability of providing the same level of service and supporting the same numbers of staff that we used to have before all of these pension reforms? And how that affects the affordability of providing the same level of service and supporting the same numbers of staff that we used to have before all of these pension reforms?
Yeah, I think, I think at the time when they started, after the second fiscal downturn hit and they started freezing positions, they froze. They actually reduced their staffing by 31%. You know, that was remarkable. But to continue, it made sense to do contracted services. But moving forward, where we're contracting services, it is so expensive. You're paying the admin fee, you're the engineering cost, you know, as when the economic economics turned around. That's where they, the contract services just rose exponentially. And, but we were still stuck because we had the unfunded liability. Like you said, the 2013 Pepper pension reform changed the game. So if you think about a Pepper employee hired post 2013 to a classic employee like me in the same position, it's a difference of about $50,000 to $60,000 in benefits. All right off the top. So then that changed the game. And then the other piece was you had to use every tool in your toolbox to reform. And we have the pension obligation bonds and the consolidation of public safety. Took it, we did ever, if you went anywhere in, in the state and they taught a class on what to do about pension reform, we've done every tool in the toolbox. And people fall short on consolidation sometimes, or they fall short on the pension obligation bonds. Though that's what really changed the game for us. So moving forward now is also the technology of if you hire someone, or if you give a 2% raise in an MOU, what does that do 30 years from now and unfund it with our retirement cost? We can see it in real time. And so what we've, what the council has approved is on average, those benefits only, income only going up on average of 3% or less. If we stay that way on that trajectory, all of our assumptions hold true. But if we ever go back on a five-year span and we're giving MOU increases, merit increases over 3% on average for a five-year span, we need to have a conversation because we start to affect our assumptions. So we're not blind. We used every tool in the toolbox. And then now coming back of just to where we are today, it makes, the analysis is leading us to this change. And it really, for me, organizational culture and, and service delivery. If you have employees of 50 or less, you can change that culture overnight and you can do remarkable things. And so that's the difference too. If we had an organization of 150 or more, we may be recommending something different. So again, it's, it's kind of quarter Madera. We're just perfectly positioned to give this recommendation.
Thanks so much, Todd, and thank you, Daria, for all your hard work on this.
Any other questions, Leva?
No questions, but just wanted to echo what others have said. I really appreciate the professionalism of staff, Todd and Daria. Every time you guys do a presentation like this, I'm amazed at how well I can follow it. And just how much you have thought through things coming down the pike in the future to really set us up. So I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Bob.
I mentioned Rich Pearlstein, you're out of the rim. I said, you're going to be one of the people who really appreciates what a difference this is going to make, right? Yes, huge. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments from me before we open up to public comment. One needs kudos to staff for problem solving this thing with, with the building inspector. Because not only did you solve it in an efficient manner, but also cost effective. So I, it just to combine the two, it's really outstanding to get that done. And the other thing that you touched upon, Todd, which I don't think you give yourself, your staff credit for. In the last couple of years, there's been a cultural shift in staff, which is gearing more towards customer service. And I think that bodes a long way. And culture isn't something that you mentioned, you change overnight. It takes time, but I think people are starting to see that improvement with, with that culture and gearing towards a customer service, employee-based staff. And I think that that's really important, really. So kudos to that also. If there's no other questions, comments, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment. If there's anybody from the public wishes to speak either in person, I know which is the only one here. He just said, no, thanks. Please raise your hand and I'm not sure if you've got any email comments in on this. Rebecca.
Thank you, Merkassisa. I'm just checking the email quickly to see if any of the comments were related to this item. And we did not receive any emailed comments.
Okay, and see no hands raised. I will go ahead and close out public comment. And Daria, again, thanks very much. This is a great prelude to our conversation next month, when we get in the nuts and bolts of the actual numbers. Just really well done. Thanks a lot. Before we get to the consent calendar, one quick announcement. Both Vice Mayor Lee and Rebecca Vaughn have kids that are on a little league team. They play tonight. I appreciate their dedication for showing up to this meeting. I know as a parent, I've been through Bach and reflect on this. It's very hard not to go to a sporting event for your kid. So I really appreciate you showing up and it's my understanding that they won tonight. So they'll be moving on. So great. And with that, we'll go ahead and move to the consent calendar. These are items that have been previously discussed. They don't require further discussion. They can be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council staff or public may request that item be removed and further discussed. So with that, is there anyone from town council staff or the public that wishes to have an item removed for further discussion? I don't see anybody from town council. Yes, Rebecca, go ahead.
Thank you, Merkassisa. We do, I did want to point out, there is an item on the agenda to appoint applicants to boards at commissions and committees where there were not more available seats than applicants. And I noticed some of those applicants on the attendee side. So I just wanted to recognize them. They may not know that they could speak if they wanted to. And we did receive two emailed public comments from Dan Kenny, who was recommended for appointment to the planning commission and for Christopher McBride, who was recommended for appointment to the sales tax citizens oversight committee, both introducing themselves and thanking the council for the opportunity. And those comments have already been uploaded to the agenda and emailed to the council. But I just wanted to acknowledge that I did see some of those applicants on the attendees tonight. Waiting to see what the outcome of the calendars is.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not going to pull out, I have just one quick comment before we get to a motion on this. I just want to thank the incumbents on these various committees under 4D that I want to say are re-upping for another, hopefully two-year period. I appreciate the service that you've already given. And for those new ones that are coming in, I appreciate you stepping up also for volunteering to sit on these committees. I sat on parking rec for a number of years and I had a truly great experience. It's truly, it is truly fulfilling. Maybe process driven and some things may drive you crazy at times, but it'll all be good. And just, I want to just point out two other things. Bob Bundy is rolling off the planning commission. He is still serving our community in a number of ways, but I want to thank Bob for his service on planning. And then Emily Janowski is rolling off parking rec commission. I think she was the longest-serving parking rec commissioner. I served with her for a number of years. She was really great, really fantastic. I think she's leaving parking rec, the commission and also parking rec department in a really good place right now. So I want to thank them both for their, their service. And I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on this since we don't have any hands raised and nobody wants to pull an item. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve consent items for A through 4G.
So moved.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. With that, there's no further discussion. Go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Merkassisa.
Yes. Now we're going to head to public hearings. This public hearing consider proposed ordinance amendments and the adoption of guidelines related to towns, inclusionary housing policies affecting new housing development quarter. I'm going to turn it over to Martha, who's here, and she's going to turn it over to Adam, who is video conferencing in, after her spiel. Thanks.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. This evening you'll be considering item to, for changes to our existing inclusionary housing policies. And these apply to all of the new housing developments within Cordera. And as the mayor mentioned, Adam Wolfe is also participating in the call remotely via Zoom. And he and I will be doing a joint presentation this evening. And also participating via Zoom, Zoom is Dina Belzer from Strategic Economics. We are very fortunate to work with Strategic Economics on this project as they are experts in this area. Before we provide you with the recommendations that are included in the ordinance and the guidelines, I'll provide some background information on inclusionary housing and also on our existing policies. So inclusionary zoning, which is also commonly referred to as inclusionary housing, are policies and practices that mandate or provide incentives for the inclusion of affordable housings as part of market rate developments. And many towns and, and cities within the state have adopted these policies as they are a way to increase the supply of affordable housing. And it's important to think of these policies as kind of a push and a pull. And these policies can have the effect of disincentivizing development. So as these policies are being developed, it's important to make sure that they promote the development of housing. Cause if, if the policies disincentivize new housing, then you will not see any new affordable units. So there are a variety of policy considerations that all work together. And we'll be providing some additional information on these different policy considerations as part of the presentation. So the completion of this project accomplishes several different goals. First of all, it accomplishes an existing program in our housing element. The existing housing element was adopted by the council in 2015. And it establishes the housing goals and programs for an eight-year period. And one of those programs was to monitor the existing affordable housing ordinance. And the purpose of this ordinance is to ensure that our policy is achieving its desired purpose, which is the creation of affordable units. Secondly, the town used some Senate bill to grant funding for this project. We are awarded $160,000 and worked collaboratively with several other cities in Marin County on three different projects. The other projects were the objective design and development standards and the accessory dwelling unit project. And those two projects have been completed. And this is the final project that we have used these grant funds for. And as the council may recall, they passed a resolution in May of 2019, recommending that we submit the Senate bill to grant application for these three projects. And lastly, updating the existing inclusionary policies is on the town council strategic work plan for the current fiscal year as a category two project. So we've been working jointly with six other agencies in Marin County. All of the existing agencies have ordinances in place with the exception of Fairfax and San Anselmo. And we've also been working with Strategic Economics. And one of the goals of this project was really to create a common inclusionary policy among all the different participating agencies. As part of the project, the consultants held several developer forum meetings. And one of the, the things that they heard from the developers is that there's too much variation among the different policies, which could make things challenging. So to the, to the extent that is practical, really, we wanted to create a policy that aligns with other jurisdictions in Marin. This slide shows the existing inclusionary housing requirements. These are, were adopted in 2003 and are codified within the zoning ordinance. The existing requirement is that 25% of new houses be affordable. So for every four units, one must be, be an affordable unit. And this is a fairly high percentage. It's among the highest in the Bay Area. And we've heard from several developers that it, it, it makes housing development unattainable. Our current minimum project size is one unit. So essentially any new residential unit, even including a new single-family home, it needs to comply with these requirements. The only current exemptions are for an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling, dwelling unit. The existing affordability targets are divided between the very low, low and moderate income levels. And our current ordinance, these targets are the same for both for sale and also for rental projects. And for projects that are less than 10 units, there is an option to either provide one low-income unit onsite or to pay the in-luck fee. And the in-luck fee is based on both the construction costs and the area median income. And the assumptions of the construction costs have not been updated in quite some time. So the assumption is that it's $125 a square foot, which is, is very low. And so essentially this has resulted in the in-luck fee decreasing over time. And the current in-luck fee is $0, which highlights one of the reasons why we are making changes to our existing policies. Sorry. And now would like to turn it over to Adam Wolfe, who will be discussing the different policy recommendations.
Thanks, Martha. As always, just a great introduction and great work on this proposal. Good evening, Mayor Cassisa and council members. The rest of the presentation really is going to try to touch on several major components of the inclusionary housing policy for you this evening. And as Martha mentioned, this is really an update to the 2003 ordinance, but it's a pretty wide-ranging update. Inclusionary housing policies by their nature are pretty complex. And so what I'm going to try to do is, is break it into several major components of the policy. But please understand that they all work together really to form that sort of try to strike that right balance that Martha mentioned earlier with, which is that Goldilocks zone where you're not disincentivizing housing construction, but you're getting the maximum amount of affordable housing units, either onsite as part of new multifamily housing projects, or it's giving off some in-luck fees. And we'll get into that. So next slide, please. So the first policy component, which is pretty simple one, is really the requirement of how many units within a multifamily housing project are required to be affordable or deed restricted affordable units. As Martha mentioned, our existing requirement is one of the highest in, in the Bay Area. And really through an analysis by Strategic Economics, as well as our own sort of analysis over the years and looking around the other Bay Area communities and, and what is sort of best practices at this point in time. We are recommending in the, in the ordinance in front of you, a 20% requirement. Meaning that 20% of the units of a proposed project are going to be required to be quote unquote affordable. And we'll get into that. Next slide. The next sort of policy component is when do the regulations and requirements kick in? At what size projects? So currently Martha talked about our current ordinance applies to one unit, a one-unit project. You know, this is something that really, I think staff, and then ultimately also the planning commission felt was problematic for a one-unit project applying an inclusionary and adding cost to that development is really a, a little bit too burdensome. So starting the threshold for when these requirements kick in is, would be two units in this proposed ordinance. There would be, so the exemptions really, as listed in the slide, are single-family residences, ADUs, JVs, and up to one unit if it's developed through SB9 or any other, any other regulation in town. Just to note that some of the other communities that, or jurisdictions that we worked with, they're actually moving from having their current regulations applied to two units or more, and actually lowering it to have them apply to a single-family unit. But in quarter Madera, we felt this was one area that we would actually differ from our other colleagues in this regard. So next slide, please. So the next part of the policy really is to discuss what we're calling affordability targeting. Like in, while we can say that 20% of the units should be set aside for affordable housing, deed restricted units. What are we talking about in terms of that affordability? What income ranges are we, are we looking at? Currently our ordinance requires 5% set aside for very low, 10% of the units for low and 10% for moderate. The proposal, proposed ordinance really provides a variety of many more options, actually. Our existing ordinance doesn't differentiate between a rental project and a for-sale project. As we dug deeper in to the analysis with Strategic Economics and their study, it really made sense to differentiate a rental project from a for-sale project. And in that regard, also give some more flexibility of, to the developers in terms of how they would actually meet the affordability requirements and the inclusionary ordinance. So with respect to rental projects, there's two options that we're going to talk about. with respect to rental projects, there's two options that we're going to talk about. And with respect to for-sale projects, there's another option. And then also, we wanted to sort of vary the requirements in terms of how much affordability would be required as part of a multifamily project. Vary the requirements so that essentially, the deeper affordability is going to be required for the projects that have the most units or thirty thirty units or above. There'd be a separate more mid-scale requirement for affordability for mid-sized projects. And then we'd make it a little bit easier to meet the affordability requirements or targets for smaller-scale projects. And this is something that really came out of our developer forums, also with our own community members and developers locally. Smaller projects are generally tougher to pencil, and so some of the some of the affordability targeting there is not as deep as it is for other projects. So next slide. This is the first option for rental projects in terms of the categories of of required affordability. So of the twenty percent, you can see for the smaller projects, two to ten units, ten percent would be required to be very low income. And then you could also, for the other ten percent, pay a fee for that, the in-luck fee, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And and so on, I'm not, we can get into this in more detail, but really, this option is targeted more to obtain very low-income units for rental projects. And you'll see the next option really is more targeted toward low-income units. And Martha, if you can go to the next slide, that'd be great. Right? And so this this option for rental projects really targets a higher percentage of actual onsite units, but they're going to be low instead of very low. And and see how they break down. And again, we can go through through these in more detail if you want. And there are also examples we can get into. For the for-sale projects, so condominiums, townhouse projects, such as the enclave, which was a recently developed project, some of you may know on Casa Buena. This would be the 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 new requirement. We also have a new income category that we're focused on in for-sale projects, which is above moderate income. So it actually is from the hundred and twenty percent to a hundred and fifty percent AMI range. No very low-income requirement for for-sale projects because of really case studies and analysis, just knowing how difficult it can be for very low-income residents to actually pay for the monthly mortgage costs on top of HOI fees and so on. It's it's a challenge there. It's also a challenge on the construction side. Next slide, please. As far as we talked about the income categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. This is the actual target AMI. So this is actually basically the cost of housing for rental projects. Think of somebody who is earning earning fifty percent of the area median income. They would qualify for a very low-income unit. And the maximum rent would be set based on somebody paying thirty-three percent of their income for that rental unit. So these are set, you can, we're setting in the policy that the targets for these different income categories at these various different numbers. And this was done consistently with our cohorts in the county. Next slide, please. This just shows a slide of what those incomes actually are at the various different income levels. And you can see this is very much a workforce housing sort of type of when we talk about affordable housing, that's what we're talking about. Next slide. And so the in-luck fee, on the some of the previous slides, we showed that some portion of the affordable requirement could be paid through an in-luck fee. And that's sort of an alternative means, rather than building those units onsite, a developer could seek to actually pay a fee for some portion of the units instead of actually building them up. Again, some built-in flexibility, which is important in just ensuring that it can work for a variety of different projects and developers. And this fee that we developed really came out of the study by strategic economics. It 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 really is a calculation based on what is called the affordability gap, the difference between what households, the various income levels can pay for housing and the cost of developing market-rate housing. And so there were three in-luck fees calculated for different development types. Because the the cost of construction of these various different types of projects varies itself. So three different in-luck fees were calculated and 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 Dean is on the call here and can get into how that calculation, if need be. And what that, where that comes from. But it's also in in staff report, we included the study and the detailed analysis there. Next slide. Just in comparison, we're going to talk about the in-luck fee getting much more significant than we quoted there as current in-luck fee, which is zero dollars as seen in this slide. That is because really the ordinance hasn't been updated since two thousand and three. And so the the formula that was codified in our ordinance and is codified today in our ordinance really didn't escalate, and there was no escalate escalator clause in that ordinance. And so as the cost of construction in reality went up, the actual calculation did not. And so currently, we have a zero zero dollar in-luck fee that somebody can pay for a instead of providing that unit onsite for for only for a project of one to nine units. We would be proposing to increase that fee to something much more in line with what you see in Larkspur, Unincorporated County, Santa Fe. You can see that those fees for a rather than building that unit onsite are pretty substantial. Next slide. And these are the actual fees that are in the proposal. These fees are again, based on that affordability gap for these different types of projects, the single-family subdivision at two hundred and eighty-nine thousand condominium townhome at two hundred and three. And the rental project would be at the highest of three hundred and sixty-two thousand. Where these would be indexed in this proposal to the California Construction Cost Index, the CCCI. We also felt it was important to have an even playing field throughout the jurisdictions participating in this project so that it wasn't more of a fee somewhere, less of a fee somewhere else. So we're all other jurisdictions are also using this rental fee. Although it looks like they may not be using the lower fees for the for-sale products and the single-family housing. Next slide, please. And so with that, those are really the major components. What we're going to be, the other important consideration that I want to stress as part of this as well is as we were doing this, we also are looking to amend chapter three point four eight of the Quatermodera Municipal Code related to the Affordable Housing Fund. The existing ordinance restricts the use of that fund to only be utilized for directly facilitating the construction of new affordable housing. And so similar to what other jurisdictions have and the flexibility they have, still in line with that purpose, the amendments to chapter three, three point four eight open up the ability for the fund to be also to be used for sort of pre-development grants perhaps for nonprofit housing developers seeking to conduct some initial, you know, to fund their development costs and other, a variety of other activities. There's, I think, a list of of two or three different other explicit ways in which that fund could be used moving forward as part of this proposal. It repeals and replaces eighteen twenty-four one-two oh Affordable Housing and changes the definition, adding residential development project to section eighteen oh four of the Quatermodera zoning ordinance. In addition, a lot of the policies that I just spoke about would be adopted by resolution. So the ordinance itself refers to a local Quatermodera Guidelines for the Administration of the Affordable Housing Regulations in eighteen twenty-four one-two oh. And so really putting those into a into a policy document that is adopted by resolution allows much more easily the town to go back and modify some of these affordability targets, some of the percentage required affordable that, you know, that I went through on the tables and the previous slides, allows those things to be changed much more easily than it would be if it was codified in the ordinance. So it this really is something that needs to be monitored and reviewed from from time to time, obviously, more more frequently than every twenty years. And to to assess really, is it working properly? And meaning that is, we don't want it to stifle the housing. We want it to also maximize the amount of affordable housing that we are getting with multifamily housing projects. And this is especially important to do now as, of course, we are contemplating through the housing element process, facilitation of of additional multifamily housing projects over the next decade and beyond, really. Next slide. Planning Commission did review the draft ordinance at its April twenty-six, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. And there's a resolution recommending that the town council both adopt the ordinance and also adopt a resolution approving the Town of Quatermodera Guidelines for the Administration of Affordable Housing Policies. Next slide. And then finally, just wanted to note that we did receive a public comment by Mac Namakian, who's the owner of six forty-five Tamalpais Drive. You know, this is a property owner. This is a property that's between the Daphne Funeral Home, which sits vacant now, and the Bank of America Building right on Tamalpais Drive. And Mac has for some time contemplated a three-unit apartment project in between the Bank of America Building and his existing medical office building at that location and had submitted an application some time ago in the sort of getting ready to gear up for a Planning Commission hearing. And so this is, while I think Mac knew that we were working on this, I think the the number of the cost of the in-luck fee with respect to the project was a surprise, and especially at this point in the process. So given that the comment, as we outlined in the staff report, we do not recommend changing the actual in-luck fee for all the reasons we mentioned previously and in the staff report. But we did want to make sure that the council had an option, should it choose to it 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 may expand the ordinance to exempt additional projects that were deemed completed by the date of enactment or effective date of this ordinance. And so that was a sort of a another ordinance that was drafted and sent to you earlier today, and it was posted on the website as sort of a, call it option B ordinance for your review and consideration as well this evening. And this is just the options this evening. One thing with respect to timing, we do, because of certain state laws that were, again, recently enacted, we're constantly adjusting here, but we do need to adopt an in-luck fee by July. I think it's the July, first meeting in July, July first of twenty of this year, or else some additional requirements for additional analysis and study kick in and make it a much more cumbersome process. So I just wanted to announce that. But but there is obviously several options and time, should the council want to consider this further. But with that, I will stop our presentation at this time, opening up for questions from from the council.
Yeah, let me go ahead and open up questions. Let me go this route. Lila, do you or Eli have any questions?
I just had one quick one about the in-luck fee, and thanks for a great presentation, Adam and Martha. That was really helpful. And the materials that you submitted on the staff report were also great. Can a developer always opt to pay the in-luck fee instead of doing any units? Or sometimes it looked like they were sort of supposed to pay part of the fee and do a unit, or if you could just
So no, there there will be always some requirement as long as you are and Martha, the threshold, maybe we have a slide we can put up that speaks to the thresholds of when fees would be required, but the actually, Martha, why don't you, maybe you can you can handle it. I think there's a, there's several different thresholds, and I don't want to confuse it. There we go. What do we got?
Okay, so I think probably the easiest way to answer this is maybe over a couple different, a couple different examples. So if a project is less than five units, then they have the option to provide the in-luck fee. So essentially, the first thing you do is you look at what the the size of the project is, and then take twenty percent of that. And then you break that down into the different income categories, depending on what the type of of project is. And also, if if there's a fractional unit, you always have the option to pay the in-luck fee for that fractional unit. So if if a project comes in that's less than five units and it's a rental project, the the threshold is you know, twenty percent of four is is point eight, so it's less than a unit. So in that case, it's likely that the applicant would choose to pay the in-luck fee instead of providing a low-income unit on on the property. And then if you end up in a situation where maybe the requirement is for four low-income units and one and a half moderate-income units, they would provide four low-income units onsite, one moderate-income unit onsite. And then you could pay half of that, the the fee as an in-luck fee. So so really, the projects that are going to pay the in-luck fees are these these smaller projects. And then also, the any fractional units, there would be the option to pay the in-luck fee.
And and I would just say in general, so you can see here that the larger projects on this slide, this is option two for the rental projects. Anything above eleven units, you're going to have to build it all onsite. There is no option except for the actual fractional unit that may come out to actually pay the in-luck fee. And that's by design, I think. As as I think we noted, our current ordinance doesn't allow you to pay in the in-luck fee for anything ten units or above. And we sort of are keeping that consistent as well with this policy, with the strategy being it would be great if we had sites in mind that the town can collect fees and apply it to if there is vacant land or what have you, our town-owned sites. But really, the the strategy here is to try to require as many affordable units as housing is getting built through private development as we can. And and so we've seen that be successful at a couple of more recent projects in Quatermodera. It also promotes sort of mixed-income projects that I think integrate the units throughout a a development. And some of those, actually, just speaking to that, some of how the units are sort of dispersed in a project are also included in the guidelines in the policy document that would be adopted through resolution. So we we haven't had that before, but I think myself working through some of those details when it came to, for example, Tam Ridge, understanding the need to disperse those units and have a variety of bedroom types and so forth. We wanted to make sure that was actually into the policy, so it's not a negotiated thing every time a project came through. Of bedroom types and so forth, we wanted to make sure that was actually into the policy, so it's not a negotiated thing every time a project came through.
And then I'll also add to that, that option one of the rental projects. Does allow for some payment of in lieu fees for for certain projects. And and this option is really trying to achieve more very low income units, which are the kind of the most. The deepest and the most challenging to to build, so then kind of in exchange for that, there's some flexibility to pay. In additional in lieu fees.
Right, thank you.
Eli, yeah, go ahead, Eli.
Thanks so much, Fred. Adam and Martha, thank you very much, it's it's clear that you guys put a tremendous amount of work into this, and this is obviously a huge and very complex task, so thank you. My main question is just, I'm trying to think about, you know, I I feel like when we have. Situations in town where we've got residents who who are maybe low income, I think. That can a lot of times be a generational problem, and I think we can have an issue where if you don't come from a family that owns a home, it can be very difficult to break that cycle and to own a home. And I know that the structure that you guys have set out here does kind of recognize that hard reality that. Folks who are very low income are going to have a very tough time getting a loan. You know, even if they can find a unit that's affordable, they'll still need a loan of of some size and they're they're going to have a very tough time. I guess my question is just, are there any other like levers we can pull or branches we can shake? In in order to tweak this policy to really like create a leg up for low income residents to maybe be able to own a home for the first time. And with with the goal of trying to basically break that cycle for for any residents who may be stuck in it.
I think within the confines of this particular. Ordinance, the inclusionary ord- housing ordinance and inclusionary zoning. You know, I think we we too, we do try to. There there is a little bit of incentive, I think, built in in favor of a. In favor of what I would call a for sale project, just in that the the affordability subsidy, if you will, is not as. Deep as it is for rental projects, especially larger rental projects. But it's not just for low, I mean, you actually low income, it's it's sort of low moderate and above moderate. Households there that would be really targeted for those units. I do understand what I think it's a very good point. I I think it's a frankly, a larger, probably a larger issue to try to tackle amongst the sort of the affordable housing industry and and groups of how to. Use the federal funds and other subsidies that are available through grants and through California and and. The low income housing tax credit and others to use those subsidies towards what you're talking about. And and maybe. At which those are really geared right now towards rental rental construction. And you know, I I I think. There I've talked to some people in in the industry who are looking at potentially. Seeing if that's a way to for the future to try to again. I think the goal being to have people attached to the community the same way that those who live in these established single family. Homes live in their communities and feel attached to the areas around them. And not be in sort of an isolated residential multifamily housing project and you know, by the highway, which is, you know, obviously where most of our sites are. And so it will be interesting, I think there is work to be done, maybe through the housing element process on that, which we can. Certainly tackle when we talk about policies and programs to pursue. And frankly, you know, I think. To be honest, some of that, I think that's some of what SB nine is trying to get at in in certain respects of of integrating sort of more affordable types of. Fourplexes duplexes into. Neighborhoods that are, you know, also those could be forever homes as well in in a way, but maybe at a more affordable cost. So just some thoughts on that, but I think within. This policy, we're. We're doing what we what we can. In that regard.
Okay, well, thank you, and I'll look forward to keeping that line of discussion open as we proceed with the rest of the housing.
Yeah, and Dean idea, I I'll open it up to you too, if you wanted to add to that.
No, thank you, good evening, council members, again, Dean of Belzer from Strategic Economics and. Now, I think, Adam, you're right, I think the inclusionary housing policy is probably not the best tool. For creating homeownership opportunities for very low income households because of the level of subsidy that's required. So I would just underscore Adam's point about looking for additional sources and opportunities beyond inclusionary.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eli, Charles or Bob?
So first off, I'd like. I'd like to thank you for speaking to the the diversification of housing stock and and encouraging developers to build within. And also kind of the benefit of doing it in our more suburban environment, you know, most of my experience from these type of in lieu. Fees or doing low income is in San Francisco, where sometimes the the, you know, the low income units would go next to the giant parking garages and other areas. And would really kind of isolate these different units into the the less desirable areas, and I didn't like that. And then also the in lieu was used to basically relocate and do. Low income in a completely different neighborhood. And in that, you know, once again, you get more bang for the buck, but also you're you're isolating when I feel like the A bag in the arena understanding is that they want them in. The zones and living like everybody else in the neighborhood, and I do agree with you that our latest developments, I know some people that live in them. They are part of the community and there is no difference between them except for income. And so I really appreciated that. I also wanted to thank you for thinking about rewarding ownership and and providing ownership. Of units over rental, I just think that that's appropriate for our community, and it feeds to our demographic that we've historically held. So I had a few questions about the in lieu in based on that, because I I'm totally in agreeance with that. It may be in the report or part of the ordinance, I guess I just wanted to, they just came to mind. Can the in lieu? Buy rights to other localities, but then the the units that we pay for be applied to arena numbers.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. The the answer is is currently no. But there was a grand jury report a few years back that spoke to how best maybe Marin County jurisdictions could utilize. In lieu, basically these affordable housing funds that are accumulating from development from in lieu fees. And and certainly there's an idea out there that perhaps. There's a way to create a scheme whereby those monies could be pooled. I will say, you know, from arena perspective, there's also these subregional. Groups that can be formed, and there's one in Napa, for example, where the county itself gets. The allotment of the arena and then the county jurisdictions or whoever's part of that group figures out how to allocate those units throughout the jurisdictions. Obviously, you can see that there's some. Challenges with those decisions that need to be made, but 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 certainly. I think from a planning perspective and an urban planning perspective, there's some real good. Benefits to that as well, as you know, with. Being able to maybe more thoroughly consider risk zones and and more appropriate locations to build housing, there's a lot makes a lot of policy sense in my mind, but I know there's. It's it's not, it's a, it's a challenge to set that up.
So it sounds like it's ongoing discussion and there'll be more to come. So expanding on that, though, also with the in lieu, is there a timeline for spending the in lieu fees? Is there a type of fund and how is it held within the city? And could it become a loan fund or something like an endowment that basically the city keeps churning to sponsor? Low income housing ownership and then basically have it refeed over time back into the endowment, thus increasing our power as the town to. To stand behind our beliefs and and what's best for the community.
Yeah. Sorry, the first couple parts of that.
All right, is there a timeline for spending the in lieu? Fund is it going to be held in?
Yeah, not that I'm aware, not that I'm aware of, there is no timeline that I'm aware of, and there's nothing in the ordinance, either existing ordinance or in what. Was proposed in this update. As far as where it's held, it is held in the Affordable Housing Fund, which is an existing fund that was on Daria's list earlier tonight. And I believe it has about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it today. It's not the fund is not only funded from in lieu fees. Also funded from. Commercial linkage fees as well, which is when commercial development, new square footage of commercial development is built. They also kick in to that fund as well, and so it grows both from development on both sides. And then the last one, that's a good question, I don't really have a great answer for you at this time, other than it would be something we'd have to explore. Further.
Wouldn't have to codify it in the ordinance now if we wanted to explore that option.
Right, and and that again would be, I think, a maybe a benefit of having, well, yeah, that's that's right, I I would just say. It would be something we'd have to explore, we could explore further and how what the options are for. Putting this into a a a fund that actually accumulates some some interest or or other sort of. You know, is is is.
I think Amy Ackerman wants to speak to that as well.
Oh, perfect, yeah, I can't see.
There there is some case law out there about. Cities that charge fees and then never spend them. Suggesting that they have to refund it, so I I like the idea of being able to make money on the money, but I think we'd have to. Structure it carefully to make sure that we do in fact expend. The fees. Yeah, there was a case where they held fees for twenty years and never spent them and obviously.
Right, if you had a target of making fifteen million dollars to do a long term project, right, like I could see justifying it and building the. The pool, but like I I just don't understand any of that, so like. You know, did the fee in two thousand and three, is it still sitting there and it, you know, I mean, I've I've discovered over the years that sometimes. Some fees to go to reclamation and stuff sit there for much longer and people actually forget about it as still in an account, so. I guess I just wanted to see if there had been any addressing of that or any kind of way to tune that or tool that in a way that's really effective to the benefit of the cause. So, thank you.
You know, sorry, along those lines, he taught, there's like six hundred and thirty-two thousand, she, because I don't know if you know, in the Affordable Housing Fund. Do you know how long that money's been sitting there for? Or any, I know, okay.
I think I think the last time funds were expended from it and and. But I think there there was funds expended for the San Clemente Place Apartments project at that time. As part of EAH's. Fun, there was a funding gap and typically that the funds can be. Helpful for nonprofit affordable housing projects that are. You know, they're looking for sources from all sorts of wherever they can get help to plug gaps in their. Performas and and. And that's typically. Sort of like the number one option for those funds. So.
Okay, thanks, Charles, do you have any other?
No, that's all, thank you.
I just had a couple on the fees, can you just briefly touch upon how those fees were established, because it seems like. They have to be not super high enough where you're totally discouraging a developer not to build, but not super low enough where. How did you strike that balance?
That's a great, it's a great question, and really the the. The fee is set based on, again, this affordability gap, so it's based on what would a low income household pay in a year to? Rent or to buy, and then what does it cost to build a unit? And then you basically subtract the cost of building the unit. Excuse me, you subtract what the household can afford to pay from the cost and the what's left over is the what's called the affordability gap. So it's tricky because the the cost of construction is high, so it makes the it makes the fee look. High, but usually as a percent of total construction costs for developers, particularly if you're building bigger projects. These costs are not. A disincentive to develop, we did run this, and the other thing I would say about this particular fee, the three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar fee, which is. What the rental fee is set at, it's set at the for the moderate income household, so it's basically how households that are would be at ninety percent of AMI. So it's the lowest affordability gap. In the range, if you did an affordability gap based on lower income households, the gap would be even larger. So that that was the thought process in balancing out what that gap would be, it was based on the real costs. But it was based on a conservative number in terms of allowing this to be for the moderate income households as opposed to low or very low. We ran these numbers by for profit developers who are building projects in Marin County, we did this. In, I want to say March, but maybe in early April, so pretty very recently, and no one, no one looked at those at the in lieu fees and said, these are way too high or feel. Out of line, they all felt like they were appropriate and and they could live with that.
Okay, and then those fees are adjusted on an annual basis? Okay, and then are there, is there a floor or ceiling on those fees, in other words? If there's a major recession, could those fees actually drop lower than what we have right now, or is right now the floor?
We tied it to the California Construction Cost Index, which is a comes out of the Department of Finance, I want to say, on a yearly basis, so it would adjust. Costs, construction costs came down as well as AMIs, well, actually, the MI wouldn't, but the the. CCCI would go up and down, so it would reflect the cost of construction.
But cities do, I'm just going to jump in here, Adam, and say that cities do, if there's a major recession, cities do go back and revisit these. That does happen.
And and that's, yeah, that's the benefit of having it in there in there in the resolution rather than ordinance.
And I noticed Sos Lito looked like their policy was they don't do any in lieu fees at all. Did we look at that, or was that just like off the table, just because again, we're trying to balance out development versus non? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, the flexibility is, I think, is was a key driver. To ensure, because not every developer is the same, not every site's the same, there's a, there's a variety of different things that. Influence decision, so really having some flexibility there was an important consideration in ensuring that. Again, it wasn't stifling. Development by requiring somebody to build on site when they just really felt that that was going to hurt their their. Their project at the end of the day, from a financial feasibility standpoint.
Okay, thanks, are there any other questions? No, with that, I'll go ahead and open for public comment. Rich, thank you. We have one one member from the present, from the public present, and then we'll also open up, if anybody has any questions, video conferencing, please raise your hands, thanks, go ahead, Rich.
Okay, I'm going to take my muzzle off, and this is on you. My name is Rich Pearlstein, I live at Nine Vista Court, I'm here tonight, actually, and I was here with Mac. The Mack in the owner of six forty-five Temple Pass, he apologizes, he had to leave because his wife is in the hospital and he did not realize that the budget. Thing would go so long, so what I do want to do is say thank you to staff for proposing the alternative. Of considering exempting out our project and any other projects that would have already been deemed complete within the planning pipeline. That will make a difference for this project, when Mac found out from from Martha that the. Likely fee would be, I think it was about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, he looked at his numbers and his feeling was that if that were the case, this project would probably. It would probably stop, and this is a three, again, a three, three units project between the Bank of America and the Funeral Home. On the parking lot adjacent to his medical office building. And and I appreciate the the question about smaller projects and and the magnitude of the fees. I think for this one, that would be the death knell for this project, I don't know if there are any other projects in the in the pipeline, but I do wonder, as Adam mentioned, if there'd be any. Eventually SB nine projects elsewhere in town, and I would be concerned for three and four unit projects potentially that would be hit by this. Magnitude of of fee. And whether or not that would disincent people that would otherwise consider building this smaller projects. And I appreciate as well, though, that for larger project, ten, twenty, thirty more units, that the fee would amortize over a larger. A larger budget, but in this instance, it would be a problem for our project, and that's that's it, thank you.
Thanks. I don't see any hands raised. Rebecca, do we have any emails in?
We did not receive any email to public comments on this item.
Okay, thanks. But I'll go ahead and close public comment. And Martha, can you or, um, Adam maybe touch upon Rich's, um, question or comment regarding the smaller unit projects?
Yeah, so we'll like, would like to point out that there are ordinance proposal does include three different in-lug fees. So if a SB nine project came through, it would likely be, uh, a, a for-sale project, a condominium, which the in-lug fee for that is set at, I believe, just over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, but you know, there, it is one of those things where the smaller projects, there's less units to, to spread the, to spread, spread it over. And so it, one of the advantages of including it in the resolution instead of an ordinance is it's something we can continue to monitor. Um, the monitoring of our inclusionary policies will likely be in our future housing element. So if, if we're finding that these smaller projects, you know, if we're not seeing them because of this fee, it's something that could be evaluated. And maybe there's some alternative means that could be included in an ordinance, um, you know, to address those concerns. Because obviously what we do not want to do is preclude, um, you know, new, new residential development be, because of this. So it is something we could monitor and potentially make changes to if it turns out that these fees are resulting in small projects not being built.
Okay, so it sounds like you would monitor and then if something, you start noticing that uh, smaller units aren't getting developed because of the fee, you would do the analysis and then potentially come back to us with a solution.
Correct. And also, we all working with all of the other participating agencies on this as well. So we all are, you know, adopting the same fee. And it's something, you know, we're trying to align our policies. So if, if we're finding this is a problem throughout the county, we would likely, you know, all meet and, um, work with an economic consultant to analyze it further and then come back with, you know, a fee that aligns with, with all of the other agencies as well.
Okay, it's, so just clarify what you just said. So other cities, are they adopting the same type fee structure?
Um, Dina can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is many of the cities are only adopting the higher fee, which is the, the rental fee, which is three hundred and sixty-two thousand.
That's correct.
And then applying that to all types of projects. So a, a condominium for sale or a, a single-family home for sale. We felt it was important to adopt three different fees. Um, and one of the reasons we did so was because SB nine could result in, you know, a, a smaller a two-plex or four-plex. And, you know, we didn't want to preclude those units by having, um, the higher fee. So we felt it was appropriate to adopt the three different in-lug fees based on the affordability gap that was done for those three different prototypes that were analyzed as part of the study.
Yeah, and I would, I would say, we also pulled back from requiring the fee for a one-unit project as well, where I think some other communities are actually applying the fee to a one-unit project.
Well, so, but in particular, there's one, um, already existing application, right? Who's written a letter? And I guess he had brought up the idea that maybe there might be other applicants that could be affected. And I think that maybe, was that something you were also asking? Is there, are there other applications that have not voiced their concerns but might be affected from the decision to, um, add that point B to the, to the resolution? You don't have, I mean, I know you can't name them, but like.
Are there applications in the pipeline?
There are no other applications in the pipeline other than some Senate Bill nine lot splits, but those do not include new units.
Okay. And then can you just clarify what the pipe, where, where we're freezing in the pipeline? Is that approved planning approvals? Is that building?
It would be the, the, the deemed complete date for plant, for a planning application.
Okay.
And basically this ordinance takes effect, we would introduce it tonight, second reading next week, and then would take effect.
Thirty days after the second reading.
So, and just to be clear with the SB nine, it won't affect the lot splits because those actually haven't, they have to do a separate permit for the actual units.
Correct.
Bob, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Sounds like staff's really analyzed this. I didn't do a lot of detail on it, really thought it through in every aspect, so. I'm pretty comfortable.
Okay, thanks.
So in, in, in that, I guess I, I personally could entertain adding the point B and allowing, because really what I'm hearing is that this applicant did the numbers on development, has gone through the planning process under the assumption before these rules had taken effect, these rules are going to be affected. But it sounds like they're ready to go. And, uh, and so like, it's a pun, it's basically outside of the it's like playing the game and making rules as we go. And I'm not a big fan of that. So I, I'm intending to wanna um, give them an exemption from that, uh, in this case.
Question staff, are they exempt or are they grandfathered in?
So if the council introduced the alternative ordinance that was provided, they would be exempt. They essentially are existing rules would apply, but as we discussed, the existing rules have an in-lug fee of zero dollars. So they would not have to pay any fees.
So I'm sorry, clarify that one more time. If we approve this tonight, or if we approve introducing this ordinance, they would not have to pay fees?
Correct. Because it would be based on the current in-lug fee and the current ordinance is what the, what they would need to comply with.
So, does, are, are you clear with that?
Yes. The bottom line is if we introduce this tonight, because we're gonna need a motion, right, to introduce it, they will not be paying any fees.
They will not be paying any, any housing affordability fees, correct?
If, if we introduce the second option, if we introduce it as the alternate, if we do the normal one, they're gonna have to pay the new in-lug fees.
Which is about two hundred and ten thousand.
Which we wouldn't collect anyway, because they say they can't fiscally feasibly do the project.
Which means they wouldn't do it, right? We're saying go with the alternate.
That's what I would like to entertain.
Okay, so why don't you, you can make a motion.
Okay.
Hold on, Rebecca, go ahead. And I'm sorry.
I just, I just noticed, Marquesisa, Councilmember Beckman had his hand raised.
I'm sorry, Eli. I, I'm sitting in the middle and I get the, um, the stereo back and forth and I forget to look at the screen. Go ahead, Eli. Sorry about that.
No, no worries. I, I was just gonna say that I, I also would support, um, introducing the alternative ordinance and, and exempting, so to speak, this project, um, from the in-lug fees. And I was also just gonna say to staff as, as a comment, um, that at least, you know, this council member would be happy to really, you know, kind of put the pedal to the metal on affordable housing in Corte Madera as aggressively as we can without actually inhibiting uh, new developments. I think, I'm sure we all know probably dozens of families that have been priced out of Corte Madera, especially during the pandemic. Um, so I just wanted to kind of add that as a general comment, both for this and future such discussions.
Okay, thanks. All right. So I'll make this formal. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we use the alternative ordinance, which basically means that the applicant that I'll say Rich is representing, because they, sorry about the address, would be exempt from, from any in-lug fees. Is that Amy is getting her hand on the mic?
Is that correct?
I, I, I think just to clarify, what, what the alternative ordinance provides is that, that it, it does not apply to, it only applies to applications that are not yet deemed approved by the time the ordinance is effective. But as a practical matter, this particular project would not be subject to in-lug fees.
Okay, that's.
Because it is possible we'll get something else in before the ordinance were effective. But yes, so I think the, the motion would be to, um, to introduce uh, the, uh, updated ordinance that was provided today with the the new exemption. And, um, we have a we have an adoption of a resolution as a companion matter. Um, do you want to go ahead and adopt the resolution at this meeting? Or do you want to wait until next meeting? It's the resolution only requires one vote.
Is there any difference? Why would we wait? Yeah, and yeah.
Probably makes sense to wait and do it at the second reading of the ordinance.
It does? Okay, okay. Okay. So now we just have the motion based pump, but you just, I'll make the motion. Instead of trying to repeat it, I'll make the motion based on what you just said.
And I'll second what he just said.
Okay. She just said. That is there any other further discussion? Okay, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Casissa.
Yes. Thank you. And again, I, I too echo, I appreciate staff. I know this stuff. It's a lot of hard work. And I know when I pick up the, before I picked up the package, I think Rebecca Lorena said, hey, this is like a hundred and twenty-four pages. I go, no, don't print it all out. So I know there's multiple attachments. So appreciate all the analysis. You too, Adam. Thanks. Okay, with that, we're gonna move on to item, uh, business sign six B, consideration and possible adoption of revised town mission statement. Town values is recommended by the, um, diversity, equity and inclusion team and discussion direction staff regarding the DEI training and collaboration proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just want to, uh, start this off. And I just, this is more reason why squaring away the building department and freeing up our planning team, the powerhouse over here to my right, um, just really complicated stuff, doing some great work for the town. Um, they start talking and it's just, it goes over my head. It's, it's really amazing. So thank God for you, Martha. Good job. Thanks, Adam. Um, okay, so this was part of our, uh, the council work plan starting January of, uh, twenty twenty-two. But I want you to know, you know, again, it's called Something Different. We're calling this, you know, DEI. And this has been a movement that started back in twenty twenty. And how do you really incorporate all of our decision-making as a town? Um, with thinking about these, this discussion. Lorena has really taken the lead from the staff. I've relied on her for the, since she was hired. We've had conversations about this. I've always been impressed, um, with her, the, the way that she approaches this, uh, conversation and topic. Um, and so this, this didn't just start, this thought didn't start January of this year is my point. Um, the other thing is just kind of, you know, just like a proud Papa, um, you know, Lorena, um, attended, uh, the Rona Park Leadership Academy. She's been a leader in this conversation, both in Marin and Sonoma County for the past few years. But she graduated the Runner Park Leadership Academy last Friday. And, uh, you know, when she went up there and she spoke, you know, about leadership and what it meant to her, they all, you know, had like one minute to say their piece about it. Um, I was really proud. She took over the room. And, um, I just, you know, she's just, she's just really blossoming and really taking the lead, um, in this important topic and many others. Um, she's gonna talk about and break this, uh, discussion down for you and who's on our team. But I also want to recognize Councilmember Longan, um, who's just been really an integral, um, part of the team and big supporter of what we're talking about. I think, you know, I've really enjoyed our discussions of challenging each other and really, you know, how you take that first step publicly and in policy as a town or a city is critical. It's the difference between a checkbox and actually developing this and making it into your everyday being of decision-making. And so I think this, even though this is the first step, we're gonna go really fast. Step three, step two, step three, step four, they're gonna come in rapid succession over the coming months for you. Um, we see this as a training in, inside out. Um, and that includes our council and all of our planning commission, you know, our, our, all of our commissions and boards. We're gonna do this together and we're gonna move, uh, lockstep and, and as we go forward. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Lorena. I don't think your staff report does justice of all the work she's put into it. And as a reminder to the council and the community, um, you know, she brings in about thirty thousand dollars in revenue to the town, uh, for her support of Fairfax and shared services. But it's not about money. It's about, um, her being a leader and developing plans for multiple jurisdictions. And so she, uh, developed, has been in the process of developing their plan dating back to last year. So this is something that she's been really working on, on multiple levels, just not here, but within the county. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Lorena. No pressure.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, so as Todd mentioned, and we've discussed this a lot, um, throughout this whole meeting, actually. Um, not only, I feel like the work around diversity, equity and inclusion has, um, come up a lot, but it has been ongoing. We just haven't, I guess, realized that we've really been doing it. Um, so May twenty twenty, everyone, the world, um, you know, witnessed what happened to George Floyd. And it, it triggered a lot of anger in people and, um, you know, put people into this mindset of taking action uh, when it comes to race and discrimination and, you know, fighting for equality. Um, and from that date, a lot of other incidents, um, have taken place. And you have, um, different levels of government and different jurisdictions taking action um, to address all of these, you know, concerns that have been brought up regarding, uh, inequality in our country. And specifically in Marin, uh, every jurisdiction has, you know, been analyzing the issues differently and taking different approaches. And so, um, as Todd mentioned, um, we've been kind of doing this already. Uh, the report that he provided where he showed, you know, all of the money that we've contributed to, it was like four million dollars to equity, um, in a way, um, you know, helping the community. Um, I guess we just never thought about it in that way, because the way that, you know, everyone works here, we just want to do what's best for everyone. We don't look at it as a race issue and things like that. We understand that there, there are equity issues in Marin and California and everywhere. So, um, but now we're taking a different approach to where we're learning more about everything that's involved regarding um, the challenge, the challenges that different groups face when it comes to, um, the things that they're trying to acquire. And for that kind of reason, and as public servants, we have to start with ourselves. And that, that was something that I also proposed in Fairfax, that we need to educate ourselves on what is happening around us. And, um, that's because we serve the community and everyone who lives here. And we have an impact on the image that, you know, we represent. And, um, if we start with ourselves, we spread our knowledge and our understanding to the advisory groups, to the town council. I mean, you are all making decisions for everyone who lives in Corte Madera. And then take that and use everything that we're learning, um, and give that back to organizations that we work with, like the Community Foundation, um, the library, the school district, um, and all of that. And then we can, you know, have better services and have a better understanding of everything that's going on and work on a more clear path of, you know, getting that equity that we're trying to reach. And, um, we need to do that together. So with the discussions that we've been having in our, um, DEI task force, uh, with Councilmember Mongan and, um, our building official, uh, Rebecca, Todd and myself, we thought it would be a good idea to start with the mission and values for Corte Madera. Because, um, that's something that captures an organization's purpose and identifies how we want to pursue that mission. And so if we change that and make sure that, um, it's something that we share with employees here and we spread that to everyone else who we work with, then it creates like a way of thinking. And, um, you all mentioned it here, how we've kind of evolved to like provide better customer service. I'm, I'm kind of like adding to my staff report. Based on a lot of the discussions that, you know, were brought up today, you know, we have this mindset now of how we want to serve everyone. It's not just about saving money and doing all of this. Um, it's like an evolution of the services that we're providing, because we are the government, we are the public service. But, you know, we serve residents here and they elect you all. And, you know, there's a whole process. So, um, in the staff report, you'll see the proposed, uh, mission and values that, um, we thought, uh, would be more reflective of what we're trying to accomplish. And that would be the start to, um, everything moving forward where later on, uh, we would also begin our transition into training and, um, working with an organization that can provide training with when it comes to equity analysis, communication, understanding all of the issues that people are impacted, um, with. And that training would be offered to council members, advisory groups, uh, so all the boards, commissions, committees. And, um, that's kind of where we think everything will start in order for us to start making changes in Corte Madera. So we felt that tonight would be a great time for you to look at the mission and values and, um, consider approving the revision that's in the staff report. And then also, um, get your feedback on the proposed, um, training and collaboration, uh, program that is also included there. And, um, Todd asked me to share what I had, uh, read in my leadership, um, program. And I, I do think that it's relevant so that you have an understanding of what he meant when, of how I approach things. And so I'm just going to read that quickly, um, so that you can see kind of my understanding and my perspective when it comes to this. And how I think, uh, Marin and a lot of cities and jurisdictions everywhere are trying to recruit people with similar ways of thinking. They're adaptive and understanding to, um, the makeup of, uh, our country here. So, um, what I read was, I am a public servant. I believe in serving my community and working to improve the services provided in a just and equitable manner. I am an education advocate. I believe that a willingness to learn, the effort to communicate and the process of understanding and applying knowledge can lead to positive impacts for those around us. I am Latina, the oldest in my family and the first in my family to complete my college education. I dedicate my time to encourage those I care for to take advantage of the opportunities we are given here, just as I did. And to live our best lives and try to make the world a better place. To that end and summarize perspective, I also share these next few words with you so that you all can take in my view of the world. So remember the following, challenge yourself, question everything, live in the moment, but live for a purpose. Those are the words I live by and I encourage you all to apply this ideology to all the work you will take on in your journey to bringing forth the change you want to see in the world. And I think we can only do that if we work together, which is why I, you can ask Todd, Rebecca. I constantly bring up communication, understanding and learning things. And I do that in other things that I volunteer for as well. So, um, just wanted to share that with you all and, um, that's the end of my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? No, I, I do have a couple of questions for you. Um, I'm on the better together, the training. How do you envision that training program? Cause it seems like there's a number of different topics. If I have this right, we're involving staff, um, council members, board committee, all the above. That's kind of part one. And then also you mentioned here something about central Marin, uh, police and also city of Larkspur. So can you just like?
Yeah. So actually tomorrow I have a call with, uh, Circle Up Education, which was recommended by, uh, our fire chief, Ruben Martin, and also the city of Larkspur has used them. So, um, from my understanding of how this organization does things is they bring someone and, um, it would be like an in-person training. And we all kind of go through, but I guess it depends on what we select to be our first training to be. But they will give us kind of like a background of what all of this entails. And from that, uh, we'd have like scheduled trainings that we can all participate in. And hopefully COVID doesn't change anything, but you know, we can schedule something like that, maybe in the community center where we're all, um, invited to attend so that we can learn about all of these different topics. And they also have different topics that they recommend, but all the organizations are different. So once, um, I kind of have direction on moving forward, there are other organizations we can look into. Regarding the training, I just wanted to start with one that we've already received positive comments on, and it's not a commitment yet. I'm still, you know, gathering information on how everything works, but these are the common kind of training topics that everybody kind of looks into.
Okay. And training would be mandatory?
Yes. Yes. So it'll be mandatory and like, like Lorena said, we're going to start so we can kind of wrap this conversation into a couple of trainings with all levels of our leadership. And then what we'll do is we'll, we'll focus on something like implicit bias. Like we all have that implicit bias, right? That's a key, a really key course. And then from there, we'll start internal discussions. And so we'll start, how, how does that, how do we put this concept like internally, like think about just on our workplace? How a public works maintenance worker, where's, English is their second language for many of them. How do they feel treated by me compared to how I treat a public works engineer? Maybe. Do they feel like they're on an equal playing field? What are things that I don't even recognize? It has to do with like when I'm six, five and I'm standing over someone, right? I'm intimidating them, but when my tone, I think I'm being cutesy or I'm being, you know, soft, but I'm not, you know? It's those things, understanding inside and going inside out. And then, you know, all levels of the government's important because then how do we develop that into our decision making? When we start to bring like fees to the commu-, you know, out to the council and the commission. So we're excited, but we're ready to go fast. We, we see this as every six weeks doing a training. We want to do a training and we'll have a makeup day, but it's going to be mandatory if you're going to be on, in any form of leadership within the, the town government.
Is it just leadership or is it all, all?
And when I say leadership, it's all employees, it's all boards and commissions, it's every, it's all of us.
Okay.
At all levels.
So just, can you just clarify then what kind of a timeline? In other words, do, it looks like tonight you're looking for approval of the mission statement, right? And then you're, it sounds like the direction, I'm getting ahead of myself, is to move forward with the, obviously move forward with the training. So if you get the, like the go tonight, what kind of timeframe are you looking at, say before the first training session? I'm not pushing you by the way.
We're starting tomorrow with the phone call and then we'll see what we can, um, get scheduled and proceed from there. And, um, like I mentioned in the beginning, this is ongoing. I mean, everything's always changing. Different issues come up in society that need to be addressed. So I'm sure that when we have another incident, hopefully not, you know, nothing, you know, that needs to be quickly addressed. But, you know, just understanding the social issues that we deal with on a regular basis that we might be overseeing. When like Todd just said, um, when we make decisions and create policies and, um, guidance. And as leaders and people working on those kinds of things, then, um, we need to educate ourselves on those issues to make sure that we're doing everything correctly.
Okay. And again, if I'm getting ahead of myself, just letting you know, how do you take this and trickle it all down to what you just said, policies, fees, all that?
Uh, I think it starts with, I always say, education and communication. And once we, you know, have an, an understanding of like the biases, for example, I mean, police officers do this all the time. I don't know if it's like every two years, but there's certain hours that they're required to, um, take trainings on implicit bias and all kinds of other topics. And so, um, I think there will always be something new. And we just have to continually stay informed and make sure that we're applying what we're learning to our decision-making and to our planning and, um, our cooperation, you know, um, working with other teams and make sure that we're also sharing what we learn. So that's kind of how I, in my mind, envision things spreading. You know, with knowledge and, um, communication.
Thanks. Any other questions from town council members? Eli or Leela? Yeah, Leela, go ahead.
Thanks. Sorry. When we get, the later we get at night, the harder I have more trouble I have with my mute button. I don't have a question. I just wanted to, um, thank staff for working on this. I really enjoy being part of this process. And, um, for me, you know, this is really about kind of putting our money where our mouth is and really being honest about what our values are. And trying to implement, um, our values so that it's not just what we're saying, we're actually doing it. So I'm really proud of staff and of Corte Madera for taking the step and appreciate the opportunity to be part of it.
Thanks. I have no other question of town council members. Uh, won't we, let me, thanks. Um, let me go ahead and open it up for public comment. Note that we have nobody from the public physically here. We have one hand raised. So if we can bring Roy over Rebecca, when you can. And then we have Patty, uh, B is behind Roy.
Boy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Go ahead, Roy.
What is D E I about? It's not about not discriminating. Supreme Court Chief Justice Roberts in two thousand and seven said, "The way to stop discrimination on the basis of race is to stop discrimination on the basis of race." There's no mention of not discriminating in the town's D E I document. This is a warning and cautionary note and a sign that the town may be following the likes of Seattle, Portland, Los Angeles and San Francisco. D E I is under the mantle and manifestation of multiculturalism on steroids, cancel culture, woke and church, church of woke, B L M, critical race theory, student indoctrination and abuse. Please replace D E I with no discrimination policy. Do you remember proposition sixteen in twenty twenty? It would have canceled Prop two oh nine. A yes vote would have institutionalized discrimination against Asians and white based on race, sex or ethnicity. All county board of supervisors endorse voting yes on Prop sixteen. Voting results, Corte Madera, three thousand four hundred and sixty-three, fifty-nine percent. And Marin County, eighty-two thousand, fifty-six percent voted yes for discrimination. The Marin Board of Supervisors arranged Sir Francis Drake Learning Sessions in August of twenty twenty. One of the panelists, Professor Jordan Leeser from Dominican College cautioned, "Be careful about comparing your morality with past morality." You think anyone listened? The panel moderator pushed that Sir Francis Drake launched racialized slavery and intentional racial Anglo-Saxonism, which is pervasive to this day. At the Tamil Pious Union Board Meeting of April twenty twenty-one, Drake graduates, so-called teachers and students angrily accused that if you do not agree with us, then you are racist, white privileged, a colonialist and a white supremacist. This rhetoric has been spoken several times over the past months at council meetings. A returning graduate of Sir Francis Drake High characterized Marin as a deeply racist community. A Tamil Pious Union High School Office member stated to me, "We need equity, equality because not everyone is equal." Several council meetings back, the council seemed to be very interested in traffic ticket equity, but had zero interest in unreported thefts in Corte Madera and assaults on police officers. The council's priorities seem to have been misplaced. I'm very concerned about what I heard tonight too, because I heard Lorena say she wants to recruit people with similar views. So much for diversity.
Thanks, Roy. Uh, Rebecca, if you can bring Patty over.
Okay, Patty, you should be able to.
Hello. Uh, I just wanted to, and, and I might've missed it, but I wanted to make sure that the, uh, D E I is going to include age, discrimination and ageism.
I'll, I'll wait till I end public comment and then have staff answer.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Patty. Uh, I don't see any other hands raised. Any email comments in?
Thank you. Yes, we received one emailed public comment regarding this item from Phyllis Metcalf. And I'll start my timer.
Thank you.
She says, "Kudos to Lorena and those she has worked with to create this important, timely statement during this troubled and dangerous period when we as a country appear to be moving backwards instead of forward. I did not think fifty-plus years later, I and other activists of my generation would be fighting for the same rights we fought for then, ending racial discrimination and promoting both civil and voting rights. I believe the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, the most important law of the last century, which was adopted with bipartisan support, would quote, "Make the real promises of democracy," end quote, as Martin Luther King challenged. Yet just this last weekend, we saw the latest horrific mass shooting, which was based on racial hatred. This hatred is part of the great replacement theory, the ugly far-right extremism that promotes white nationalism, white supremacy, anti-immigration, antisemitism and other hateful ideologies. Far-left extremists are no better. They show their hatred for those who don't share what they consider intellectual purity, accusing them of sabotaging their agenda. Extremism, right or left, is dangerous. The, this mission statement and the values it promotes are an important step at this consequential time as America evolves, both socially and economically. I urge the council to adopt the revised statement for staff to work to fulfill it and its values. Phyllis Metcalf.
Thank you. And with that, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to town council. We're looking for a, um, potential motion to approve the, um, revised mission statement. Charles, go ahead.
Can I just receive?
Cab, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, can we, Lorena, can you, can you address Patty?
No, we're gonna, uh, something, can we pull up the mission? So I don't know, has everyone specific to Roy, both comments? Can we pull up the, the staff report that has the current mission statement? And let me just, and Lorena and Councilmember Mongan and Rebecca, please jump in from your lens and your perspective, because this is important. Everyone, this isn't a political statement. This isn't a checkbox statement. This is a way of life and I, and I, so I wanna, I want you, you know, we just went through this process last year. With, um, when, when Councilmember, um, Beckman was the mayor on our communications plan. And we surveyed the community internally, externally, every which way, what do we do well? What do, what is expected of us from the community? What do we think our role is as public servants? What are we trying to accomplish, right? What is our mission and value? So it's every day. So when my staff fall short and I fall short, we go to this mission statement and values and we say, where do we fall short? What do we do good? The council, we're on the same page. Like what do you expect of me and my team, right? When we fall short, where do we fall short? And so we went through this process. It's the same process that you're, we're calling it, you know, there's also justice to this conversation, right? It means something, I think our, let's talk about the definitions a little bit, and that's for Leela and, um, Rebecca especially to talk about it. But look at the mission statement in front of you. Everybody can read it. Um, and, and there's key points, right? This is our community. Our, first, we're going to protect our health and safety. Our quality of life means so much. The delivery of services in a courteous, transparent and effective manner. Our customer service. We're going to work alongside our residents to improve the beauty, infrastructure and character of our town. The volunteerism, the public-private partnerships, fiscal responsibility, well, we covered that. We want to be vibrant and prosperous. Our core values, you can see the six bullet points, right? Two-way, this is, this is not a D E I conversation, right? This is like, this is what we're talking about last year, right? Two-way communication and participation, inclusiveness. So, and, and I'll, I'll circle back to that in a second. The, being democratic, open, transparent, cultivating volunteerism, all those things, right? So that's, that's, that's the statement. And so then, you know, we're talking about, okay, what does D E I mean? So what does diversity mean? What does it mean from a hiring standpoint? You know, uh, who you surround yourself with. I don't hire based on, I base it on trades. It's trades. That's what I hire on. And if you look around my team tonight and, and who, who the leaders are, um, it's a split. We are just a great melting pot mix of leaders, uh, as staff. If you, if you pay attention to who we are, who is in leadership positions. So we're doing things the right way, right? How are we inclusive? So how do we make decisions? So me as a town manager, if it's a, am I going to the four corners of the, of this town? When I'm bringing something forward to, to the council, or am I just going to the ten people that can get me fired? That have relationships with council members. If I don't have the expertise in this town, am I going to Marin City? Am I going to, uh, the Canal District? Am I looking outside of the town to make sure my council is set up with options and decision-making? Do I do a good job of that? It has nothing to do with, are you a senior or youth? Are you a thirty-year resident or a five-year resident? Do I, as a leader, am I, am I doing everything I can to include everybody in the conversation, right? So as we've moved forward from this statement that I just read you into, can you move to the, the new one? So as we started to talk about this, that's what we focused on, Roy. We focused on, what does diversity mean? What is inclusive? Like we already, we know we want to be inclusive, right? We want to include everyone. We already did this. We had this conversation. It was just, it was, it was, I don't want to say branded. It was, just had a different name to it. We just did this. So what we did is we went back and said, okay, do we miss anything? And so if you look at what we had last year going into this year, there's a couple of changes and it really tells a story. We don't make decisions because you're a senior. We don't make decisions because you've been a thirty-year resident. We don't make decisions because of your color. You can't do, that's not what we're talking about here. And that's not, you're not going to find a word that says that. We're gonna serve, what is the word? And it's bold for all in Corte Madera. We're gonna preserve it. Read that. And I challenge anyone to challenge us on it. You know, Roy, that's not what Lorena said of, we want to have people think of in, in kind. She's the opposite of that. She's going to challenge everything. She challenges me every day. You know, we're, it's the puzzle pieces to the leadership team. We want to be different. So that's our job. Are we doing a good job of recruiting people into our decision-making, right? Are we doing that? Are we doing it for staff? Are we doing it for when we bring things forward? And I'll tell you that just to be criticized, to criticize myself, if I had to criticize and I go back the last six years, there's a core group of leaders in this community and they are very similar. And I rely on them and I know that if I wrong, if I upset them, there's going to be political ramifications and that is not okay. And so I've slowly started to change that philosophy of making sure I'm doing a good, because my staff has challenged me on it. To make sure I am doing everything I can. to make sure I am doing everything I can to include everyone. And so the definitions for me, when we started to say, what is diversity mean? What does equity mean? What is inclusion? How does justice play into that? That team is just education of like, for me, I don't need to know the answers. I need to sit down, listen and educate myself. This mission statement, I'm proud of it. So, because I, I'm proud of it. And so, you know, if anyone's going to criticize, I would read the mission statement first. And I, you know, I challenge anyone. And if someone has recommendations, that's what we're here for. We're here to have that discussion. Uh, but this is a good start. Um, and I think the team um, has put something forward.
I have a hard time with that thing too.
Todd, thanks for um, speaking to that. And, and so I just wanted to follow up on that. Um, I have fifteen years in the, in the private industry of firms that were larger than five hundred, where there was a lot of mandatory training from HR and others, which I think most people are familiar with as this type of training. But that training traditionally was structured in a way where HR was protecting itself from lawsuits, right? And it created a very uh, combative environment where it really shut down any kind of communication. And I think that maybe that's what some older generation uh, have experienced, right? But in the last five years, the dialogue and the overall understanding of, of how we even better the community beyond that protection um, is this new discussion that we're having. And it, I had to have that training um, for years. There was mandatory levels and then there was voluntary levels. There's whole training facilities and it's really leadership training um, in the end, because to be an effective leader, like you said, you have to get rid of your own biases so you can bring in the best employees. And you don't exclude all the great ideas that will benefit the greater community, right? Um, and so in that, those type of trainings, perhaps it, it's not exposing the people to what those really are. They have their own biases because they haven't taken the class on how, what, what those vocabularies or what those traps are and how, if you really listen to the newer training, it releases everyone from it. It doesn't just release certain groups from the responsibility of truly coming together as a community. And so I look for those tropes, that vocabulary in discussion points and in dialogue, and I didn't see it. Um, and so that's why I know that we're on the right trajectory and that will continue to evolve as we move forward. And I think it's good for staff. And I, you know, I think it's not just about making a political statement or government. I think it's also what Lorena was touching on about this evolution of budget and dialogue about service and everything. It's also about the understanding that the government can, you know, this push towards, the private industry's done it for a long time, right? The government didn't have to. There's no checks, even though at the highest levels of the constitution, we think all those rights are protected and guaranteed and that we accept it. And yet, the easiest kind of methods in which to really protect those things, the education at an individual level, the ongoing kind of maintenance of that, didn't exist. Um, and so that's really what we're talking about instituting. And that's why I think it's a really good thing to bring to the town, to all the um, you know, uh, employees. I wish it could be for any resident that also wanted to. Um, but you know, that's, that's neither here nor there. But that, that's kind of my um, point, uh, point and, and personal reflection on it. So thank you. And I can support the mission statement.
Uh, Bob?
Very well said, and I agree with it. Thank you.
Uh, Leela or Eli? No, no comments. Okay. I, I think this is all great. I think we have to start somewhere. And I think we're basically starting at the top with the mission statement and everything else waterfall down. So I think you've done, today you've done a fantastic job. I don't know what you've done at Fairfax, but I can consider us trend setters. And you're setting the bar and you're also setting the trend. And, and all that is due to you and all the hard work you put in. So, so kudos to you. So with that, what I'd like to do is go, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the revising updated mission statement and then provide direction to staff to move forward with training. And I like the way you guys do it in an expedited fashion would be great, which I, like you said, phone calls tomorrow. So I'll make that motion.
One second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Uh, go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Beckman?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Mongan?
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mercis.
Uh, yes. And with that, we're going to move to council reports. Uh, we have about three minutes before we have to extend the meeting, so we'll see where this falls out. Um, Todd, managers' report?
Updates.
Okay, thanks. Eli? I'm not trying to.
Nothing to report.
I'm extending. I'm sorry, what's that?
I said I've been out with COVID, nothing to report.
Thanks. I hope you feel better and get better soon. Uh, Leela?
Nothing to report.
Bob?
I'll do it next time.
Thank you.
Charles? Nothing.
I'll go nothing route also. I'll defer mine for, for, for next meeting also. We have the draft agenda for next meeting. And if there's no further business, I will go ahead and adjourn the town council meeting. Thank you, everybody. And we do have a sanitary two district meeting. And with that, I'll go ahead and call that meeting to order. I won't bang the gavel. Um, Rebecca, can we get a roll call, please?
Board Member Beckman?
Here.
Board Member Mongan?
Here.
Board Member Avazia?
Here.
Board Vice President Lee?
Present.
And Board President Casissa.
Here. And this time we'll go ahead and open the meeting for public comment. This is anybody from public wishes to speak on a topic. Again, this is a sanitary two district meeting that is not on um, the agenda. And with that, again, we have nobody from the public here. I don't see any hands raised, any emails in?
We did not receive any emails, public comments on sanitary district items.
Okay. And as we have no hands raised, I'll go ahead and close public comment. We do not have any presentations tonight. Uh, we have the consent calendar. These are items are in the normal course of business. They don't require further discussion. Uh, they can't be approved by a single motion. Any member of the, the board, staff or public may request that IMP removed for further discussion. So with that in mind, is there anybody from the board, staff or the public wishing to remove a um, item for further discussion? Rebecca, any emails?
No email, public comment was received.
Thank you. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment. And is there a motion to approve the consent item, uh, consent calendar items for A through 4C? So move. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead and call for the vote.
Board Member Beckman?
Yes.
Board Member Mongan?
Yes.
Board Member Avazia?
Yes.
Board Vice President Lee?
Yes.
And Board President Casissa.
Yes. Uh, we have no public hearing hearings. We don't have any business items. Is there a district manager report?
No.
Are there any board member reports?
No.
Thank you. Um, and what we'll, we'll have the agenda for our next meeting. Um, and with that, if there's no further business, I will go ahead and adjourn the S, uh, sanitary district two meeting. Thanks, everybody. Eli, feel better soon, huh?
Thank you. I, I feel pretty much great. Um, and I'm done isolating on Friday. So that'll be good.
Great, great.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Night.
Thank you.
Bye.